Good evening. Welcome to the May 21st, 2025 meeting of the Northampton City Council. I'm Alex Jarrett. As council president, I'll be presiding along with Vice President Rachel Maori. This meeting and all participating in person and on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. The meeting can also be watched on Comcast Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel. Now call the city council to order. Could you call the roll, please?
Councillor Dubs.
Here.
Councillor Elkins.
Here.
Councillor Jarrett.
Here.
Councillor Clemmer.
Here.
Councillor Labarge.
Here.
Councillor Maori.
Here.
Councillor Moulton.
Here.
Councillor Perry.
Here.
And Councillor Rothenberg.
Here.
Council President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's highlights include the mayor's presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget and associated financial orders, nine Community Preservation Act recommendations for funding, a citizen petition to rezone parts of Central Business Side Street to Urban Residential C, and a resolution in support of an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts. Before we get to public comment, we have an announcement of a public hearing and a short public hearing. First, announcement of public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget. Per Northampton Charter, Section 7.4, the City Council Committee on Finance will hold public hearings to consider the proposed FY 2026 operating budget on Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, and Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, 212 Main Street, Northampton. The public hearing will be conducted in a hybrid format with the option for the public to participate either in person or remotely. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the May 27th and June 4th City Council/City Council Committee on Finance agendas posted on northhamptonma.gov, no later than 48 hours prior to the hearing. The City Council Committee on Finance will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. The proposed fiscal year 2026 budget will be available for inspection by the public beginning May 16th in the following locations at the specified times: online on the City of Northampton website at northhamptonma.gov, and then you go to Mayor's Office and Budgets. At the Forbes Library, 20 West Street, Northampton, hours Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, closed Sundays. The Lilly Library, 19 Meadow Street, Florence, Monday, 10:00 to 5:00, Tuesday, 10:00 to 8:00, closed Wednesday, Thursday, 10:00 to 8:00, Friday, 10:00 to 5:00, Saturday, 10:00 to 5:00, and Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00. And at the City Clerk's Office, 210 Main Street, Northampton, Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. I hope you can join us. The next is a public hearing on 25.215 Comcast petition to install underground conduit for cable service to 589 Park Hill Road. We are holding a public hearing now, 6:30 PM. On Comcast petition to install underground conduit for cable service to 589 Park Hill Road, and we will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Second, motion made by Councillor Labarge and seconded by Councillor Maori. All in, any discussion? All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is now open. And I believe we have a representative from Comcast here. We'll start with Michael Miller. And let me ask to unmute. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening.
Would you like to give a brief synopsis of what you're proposing?
Sure. We'd like to bring service, new service, internet service to 589 Park Hill, and that involves trenching from a pole on the opposite side of the road, about 10 feet, and then boring underneath the roadway, hitting into their private property, and then trenching up to their house.
Okay, thank you. And I see attached to the agenda is the DPW recommendation, which I don't see any water, sewer, et cetera conflicts there.
Correct.
Is, are there any questions by councillors? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this petition? And I see first, Mask Care. And if you do not wish to, if you're here for general public comment on Zoom, you should lower your hand. Okay, everyone has lowered their hand, so there's no one here to speak on the Comcast petition. Okay, and if there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
To close.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Moulton and seconded by Councillor Clemmer to close. Any discussion? All in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we will, we will vote on this item a little bit later on the agenda. Which brings us to public comment. So if you wish to make a public comment, you can sign up on the sheet at the podium. And if you're on Zoom, you use the raise hand feature, which is in the bottom menu bar, left on React. If you're having trouble raising your virtual hand, you can turn on your video and physically raise your hand. If you want to submit a written public comment, you can email it to citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. It will be sent to all councillors and will be part of the public record. I'll alternate between people in the room and people on Zoom. And before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to a maximum of two minutes. After two minutes, I or someone else will ask you to please finish your sentence. And if someone has already said something you agree with, feel free to second their thought. That could give people more time to speak overall, because we, overall, we limit public comment to 90 minutes. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment. It is your time to speak. And our rules also state the councillors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. You can speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda, and all comments are to be directed to the council. We'll start in the room with Nathan Chung. Is the green light on there?
Hi, Nathan Chung, Northampton resident. I want to quote something from a Korean legislator. His name is Kim Sangook. This was, he's one of the ones who were very vocal about the impeachment of the president, of South Korean president, in, for his December coup. And he's actually from his own party, so he got a lot of flak for speaking up. This was his interview on April 10th, 6 days after the impeachment. He said, first read in Korean. That translates means when people don't want to watch politics, that's when they need to watch politics. As we get into a very contentious cycle of history in the United States, both at the federal level and personally local level, we have to really focus attention on how we are treating each other and what kind of political atmosphere we are creating. If we are creating an atmosphere of intimidation, fear, gaslighting, basically attempts meant to hurt other people and devalue other people to achieve our political ends, you know, we want to ask what kind of society are we creating? And that's also a question to ask both at the federal level and national level. And I like to ask people in general that, yeah, we are all busy. It's very hard to focus on local politics or pay even a small attention to it, especially when it's so emotionally charged. But in some ways, that's the time when you really want to focus at least some of your attention to look at what's going on. You know, let's look at how we are treating each other, both in public sphere and also private spheres like Facebook. Are we using gaslighting tactics? Are we insulting people? Are we making them afraid so they are afraid to speak up or to be more openly political? I just want to raise that question for everyone. And lastly, the nationalized healthcare system in Korea works pretty well, but it's also a social source of tension. There's this always ongoing discussion between how much you compensate the healthcare providers and how much, how rate, how do you keep the rate low? I understand something on the agenda, so something, something interesting to think about. And I think one big question is, if nationalized healthcare becomes a reality for the United States, inevitably, some people are going to lose their jobs with the administrative.
Nathan, that's time. You can finish your.
Yeah.
Fin it.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Yeah, so appreciate what you're doing, and there are some complicated implications tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Hey, on Zoom, Mask Care. If you could say your name and city or town, please.
Hi, I'm trying to turn my video on.
Okay.
It's just, okay, there we go. Thank you. My name is John Weissman. I live in Granby, and I chair the Massachusetts Campaign for Single-Payer Healthcare, known as Mask Care. Thank you for the opportunity to support the Medicare for All resolution, and thank you for your past resolutions in support. While we call our plan Medicare for All, this does not mean simply expanding the current version of traditional Medicare to all age groups. Traditional Medicare is complicated. It's not comprehensive, requires premiums and additional out-of-pocket spending by patients, all disincentives to seeking care. It allows insurers to extract profits via the Medicare Advantage option. But as you may know, the word Medicare is shorthand for medical care as used in Canada and Australia, as well as the US. Medicare for All is a popular name for single-payer healthcare as social insurance, as in Australia and Canada. Under single-payer, Medicare, medical care is free at the point of service. All doctors and hospitals are accessible to any resident without the restrictions currently imposed by insurance companies, employers, and Medicare Advantage. Fair taxation replaces premiums, co-pays, deductibles, et cetera. Single-payer eliminates costly administrative waste from and profit associated with the healthcare industry. Our UMass economist Jerry Friedman determined that a Massachusetts single-payer system reduces overall statewide healthcare costs by 30%, and over 98% of Massachusetts households will spend less on healthcare under the act than they do now. I encourage you to vote for your resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the room, Tina Ingman.
Tina Ingman, Ward 6. Good evening, councillors. I appreciate that the mayor's new budget sticks to the fiscal stability plan that has served the city well for over a decade. We know this budget is the product of months of collaboration between the mayor's office, all departments, and residents. While we know that every department can always make good use of more money, it's good to see that departments will receive budget increases this year while not depleting our stability reserves. Our fiscal stability plan is about keeping up reserves so that city departments can count on annual steady increases. The plan maintains reserves so that the peaks and valleys in revenue are evened out. Yo-yo budget trajectories are terrible for city employees and residents, and more expensive in the end. Maintaining basic fiscal, financial stability during volatile times is caring about people, especially our most vulnerable residents throughout the city. Not going broke in the middle of the year, being prepared for emergencies, planning for resilience, that is caring about people. Recently, we've been fortunate with years of good revenue, including that extra government pandemic money. People might not remember previous yo-yo layoff and hiring cycles. They might not remember that our city has had down years and deficits. With federal and state funding at risk, now is not the time for unsustainable spending. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Mindy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Mindy Haskins Rogers. I live in Florence, and I'm here to talk about school funding. I want to talk about values, about our values as a community, especially at this moment in our country's trajectory. When I hear funding for public education being framed as a contribution, as if it is optional or a kind of charity, I get concerned about the state of our shared values. Public education in the United States began in Massachusetts. It began in the 17th century as a privately funded endeavor and quickly became a publicly funded resource. We've had to work a long time to expand access, and we're still working towards greater equity, but we've been funding our public schools for centuries based on a shared belief that education should be free and available to all. We can have complaints about our public education system. I'm in it. And as a teacher, I often do, but I know they can't be fixed if we are underfunded and understaffed. I don't work in Northampton. I became a teacher because I care about education and access. I came from a working-class family, and I was the first to attend college. I started at a community college, and that helped me to get a scholarship to Smith, which effectively brought me out of poverty and into the middle class. Member Clemmer asked at a recent meeting what else we might do besides funding our schools. And I know there are plenty of affluent families in Northampton who have access to alternatives. They can pay for pep courses, for private tutoring, and for enrichment programs in the summer. But by eliminating things like the dual enrollment program that allows our juniors and seniors to take community college courses while they're at NHS, you are cutting off perhaps the main pathway to a college education for many of our less economically advantaged students. And so I'm asking you, please, this is not a moment to rethink our values about public education. And I want to read just a quote that's on the side of the public library in Boston. "The Commonwealth requires the education of the people as a safeguard of order and liberty." That's all. Thank you. Please fund our schools, and I like the Medicare for All, too.
In the room, Joan Barberich.
Hi, Joan Barberich, Ward 1. I echo everything she said. That was beautiful. I want to bring to light that the difference between cutting services and cutting positions. And I just want to emphasize how desperately needed the services are for the children and for the staff who's holding more than they should be. I remain very confused about why it's difficult to give what's necessary to the schools. And I invite you to ponder it deeply. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Judy. Your name and city or town, please.
My name is Judy Tomasi, and my family owns the property of budding the proposed development on Phillips Place. This is for item number 13. I support the petitioner's request to have this property rezoned back to residential. I recommend you move this request forward to the appropriate governing bodies as soon as possible. I recommend you urge the planning board to postpone considering approving this project tomorrow night until after they've had the opportunity to fully consider this rezoning. Many residents and taxpayers are up in arms about the proposed monstrous development that is surrounded by a historic district on the National Register. The development is totally out of scale and character with the neighborhood, and the parking and traffic, traffic situation will be a nightmare. The fundamental reason we are in this situation is because of the deficient and non-transparent zoning of one of the parcels back in 2022. A zone change, especially a zone change from residential to commercial, is a major regulatory action by a local government. The only people that would have looked at that 2022 agenda and known that this parcel was being upzoned would be the city staff and the developer. Other rezoning agenda notices by the city in 2022 clearly listed the street names on the agenda. I'd like to read a few relevant excerpts from a May 2024 American Planning Association article regarding equitable zoning notifications. Quote, "Citizens must be informed when the government is going to take action that affects them. Public notice enables public participation," end quote. This did not happen in the 2022 agenda notice. Quote, "Zoning can be complicated, but public notices need to be as simple as possible," end quote. What happened here is that the public couldn't understand because the rezoning was buried in a Form-based code zoning amendments along with 13 other sub-agenda items. Quote, "Sticking with the minimum requirements for public notice is generally not the best way to prioritize more equitable outcomes from the public process," end quote. In other words, just notifying the property owner whose property will be rezoned and not notifying any neighbors of this major regulatory action is totally deficient. If the city now allows the proposed rezoning back to residential to be fully considered, the city.
That was time. If you could finish your sentence.
If the city now allows the proposed zoning back to residential to be fully considered, the city has the opportunity to be transparent to its citizens and follow proper planning protocols. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Berkowitz.
Good evening, Shelley Berkowitz, Ward 1 at 78 speed. My comments are in support of passing the City Council resolution, which I wrote, in support of passing the Medicare for All bill in Massachusetts. The first reading will be near the end of tonight's meeting. I thank the resolution's four cosponsors, councillors Dubs, Maori, Moulton, and Rothenberg. I'm aware that tonight's meeting is mainly about the budget, and many here are supporters and advocates for the public schools, as am I. I believe access and equity and access to affordable healthcare and to appropriate free public education are both essential aspects of democracy. Healthcare is a basic human right. As a family doctor of 40 years, I witnessed the escalating burnout and subsequent shortages in primary care in our community due to time-consuming administrative tasks inflicted on doctors by insurance companies to increase their profits by limiting needed care. The mask bill would save us $30 billion a year, close to $7 million annually for the city of Northampton. The bill is introduced year after year without a boat due to the massive financial influence of lobbyists from the insurance and pharmaceutical industries. Why now? Massachusetts spends over $15,000 per person in healthcare, $70 to $90 billion a year. 30% is wasted via administrative blow and corporate profit. Stewart Healthcare went bankrupt, causing Massachusetts hospital closures, leaving healthcare deserts. The assassination of the CEO of United Healthcare heightened awareness of the corruption in corporate medicine. This bill, funded primarily by a payroll tax, only needs 4% to administer, which means more health care, without deductibles, co-payments, or pre-existing conditions for all residents regardless of age or employment status. If the city council passes this resolution, similar resolutions in other municipalities will serve to add pressure to pass this bill in the Massachusetts Legislature. Medicare for All would save Northampton City millions of dollars to help fund essential services and our schools. The unions and mass, the nurses and NAES are in support.
That was time. If you could just.
Last sentence. "In November, the ballot question six on Medicare for All passed in all 11 districts where it was polled. It's the right thing to do now. Thank you."
Thank you. On Zoom, Tom Riddell.
Thanks. Thanks, Alex. If the mayor strictly followed the guidance of the fiscal stability plan, what would the NPS budget be for FY '26 compared to what she's determined it to be in her new budget? In her very first budget message, the NPS budget was $35.1 million for fiscal year '23. And assuming it increased by 4% each year for FY '26, it was projected to be $39.5 million. In her new budget message on Friday, the NPS budget is $43.9 million, which is $4.3 million above what the fiscal stability plan called for. That's a result of the continued reality that the fiscal stability plan consistently underfunds the schools. People, lots of them, keep telling the mayor, the school committee, and the city council that. And they have had to respond to the conditions that require additional funding. Nevertheless, the budgets for the last two years have not met level services, and there have been job losses and service reductions. And as generous as the mayor's budget message narrative attempts to paint this picture, it's still inadequately below level services and the strong budget. The fiscal stability plan consistently calls for underfunding the schools. The recent response has been to use reserve funds, other one-time funds, et cetera, to cobble together insufficient efforts to meet the schools' needs. It should be obvious that one of the problems is that the fiscal stability plan needs to be revisited, rethought, and reconfigured so that there's not this constant yearly battle over the NPS budget. As the mayor continues to suggest, the mayor, the school committee, and the city council need to collaborate and come up with a sustainable plan for increasing the recurring revenue contribution to funding the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a message from Northampton Open Media that their broadcast is down. They're working on it, but it is being recorded. The Zoom meeting, however, is still up, so if you know of someone who's having trouble watching the YouTube stream, you can refer them to the Zoom meeting. Next in the room, Joellen McKenzie.
I'm Joellen McKenzie, and I live in Ward 7.8. I serve on the Coolidge Exhibits Committee, appointed by the trustees of Forbes Library. Forbes Library has recently hired, the museum has recently hired a museum exhibits designer to reimagine the museum space with new exhibits. The library has submitted an application for a textile conservator to come for an onsite visit to evaluate the materials in the collection and to make recommendations for cleaning, repair, conservation needs for future exhibitions, and for improving storage. This includes such items as hats, boots, clothing, purses, and accessories worn by the president and first lady. The Coolidge Museum plays a vital role in educating the public about the history of Calvin Coolidge, the 30th president of the United States, and the local history of Northampton. By preserving these items and properly curating them, the museum can deepen the community's connection to its heritage and enhance its educational programming. The visiting conservator will also evaluate and make a storage plan for about 50 t-shirts in the local history collection from the 1970s to 2000s related to the music history of Northampton and the Pride Parade. The conservator will also advise on how the Northampton shirts can be safely exhibited at the library and in other venues in the community. The focus on these items related to Northampton's music history and the Northampton Pride March helps to highlight underrepresented aspects of local culture, and it elevates the voices of marginalized communities. There's great community interest in the history of the local arts and music scene and the history of the Iron Horse. Thank you CPC for your approval, support, and enthusiasm for our work to preserve Northampton history. We ask the council to approve the grants list as recommended by the CPC. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Maria.
Hello, Maria, Ward 6. I would like to speak to the budget specifically about the inadequate amount of funds that are being included in this budget for FY 2026. There comes a time when even the most well-intentioned frameworks outlive their usefulness, when the structures that once protected us begin to hold us back. Northampton prides itself on its fiscal prudence over the last decade, but the current budgeting framework, once necessary and right, is no longer serving our city. The refusal to acknowledge this shift and the unwillingness to pivot toward a more adaptive, needs-based approach is now causing real harm. It's undermining our city's ability to meet the most fundamental of its responsibilities, to serve its people. Guidelines are not mandates, and I am confident that the DOR, the Department of Revenue, that I've heard the mayor cite repeatedly as part of the fiscal stability plan. I am confident the DOR does not recommend sacrificing essential public services in order to boost an already healthy reserve account. Responsible governance means applying guidelines with judgment and balance in service of the community's real and present needs, not as a shield for austerity. The continued underfunding of our schools isn't just a budget. The continued underfunding of our schools isn't just a budget issue. It reveals a troubling absence of strategic vision from those in power and a shortfall of leadership at a moment when bold thinking is desperately needed. The strength and future of any community is in its children, in the education we provide, the opportunities we ensure, the message we send about what and whom we value. Our public schools are not a line item to be squeezed. They are the very foundation of community vitality, public safety, economic development, property values-
That's time that you could finish your sentence. I don't know why that's so-
Public safety, economic development, property values, mental health, and long-term stability, all of it is deeply interconnected with the health of our public education system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in the room is Beth Adams.
Hi, everyone. My name is Beth Adams. I live in Northampton, and this is my 25th year teaching math at Northampton High School. I am speaking in support of the strong budget for the schools. Last year, NHS lost an English teacher. The fact that the English department is down a teacher from last year's budget cuts, on top of having lost another teacher several years prior, is not even mentioned anymore. It has become a fact and is no longer thought of as a loss. This year, we're losing a tech integrationist, the person who does all tech support for MCAS, AP tests, and troubleshoots tech problems in the moment. Our tech integrationist manages our Flexblock software and attendance for Flexblock. She works with special ed students and their teachers so that students on IEPs get the tech accommodations they are legally entitled to. She goes into classrooms to teach about digital balance, digital footprint, and video editing, and is working with students to roll out an awareness campaign about digital balance for next year. She works daily to address all these issues. This position was chosen as the one to cut because it's not a student-facing position. In my classroom, I rely heavily on my technology, computer, document camera, and projector to work every day. When one of those devices doesn't, I call her. She's at my door within minutes, and in order for those of us who have student-facing jobs to do them effectively, we need the support of people who aren't responsible for a classroom of students all day. The person doing this job matters. The reason I bother to call her when I'm in a class and am kind of panicked is I have confidence I'll get a response. At some point in the not-too-distant future, the school and the district will realize, hey, we need someone to do all those things. Let's hire a new person into that type of role, and a new person will be hired, and no matter how wonderful that new person is, they will take time to get to the place Michelle has already gotten to, a place where she effectively navigates day-to-day challenges and sees the bigger picture of technology in our lives. Cutting this position is penny wise and pound foolish. The same is true of many positions that have been cut in the schools. Fixing the problems caused by lost position ends up costing money and spending us debt. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Colin.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Your name, city, or town, please.
Yes, hi, Colin Hoffmeister, Northampton, Massachusetts, and I appreciate the time the city council puts in. I have a couple of general comments, and the first is that I just have to express my dismay in the direction that the city has gone the last several years. Been a property owner for 32 years, and I've never felt so disenfranchised by the reaction and the communication by the city at many levels. And I'm appalled at the cutbacks to the school, and I know there's pressure by the city to balance budgets, and they're jamming, you know, housing all over the city against the will of many neighborhoods, including my neighborhood. And there's a common theme in successful neighborhoods, if you look across, successful communities across the country, ones that have good tax base and have good communities, and that is healthy schools. If you have good schools, people want to have their, families want to come and have their kids educated there. When you're cutting the schools, you're really hurting the community. My next point is about this petition that's on the agenda tonight, 25.251, item 13, the petition to amend chapter 350.4, interpretation, the upzoning for a developer of a residential lot on Philip's Place to turn it into a commercial lot in order to put a 70-bedroom, 55-foot-tall, some 200-foot-long apartment building. We proposed this ordinance several weeks ago, and we were given bad advice by the council. Perhaps it was by mistake. It was voted down, and then the next day we were told that, well, we didn't have to present it that way. We resubmit the ordinance, and it's been slow-walked. So tomorrow is the follow-up meeting for this hearing, and I really just hope that you are behind this and support and open a dialogue. The neighborhood is open to housing, but putting this sized building is just not a good thing for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Next in the room, Ray Saunders.
Yeah, good evening. So my name's Ray Saunders, and I live in Northampton. I'm here to ask this council to support a pilot program that could save lives, an emergency legal response system for community members at risk of sudden illegal detention and deportation. Under the Trump administration, people, including visa holders, legal residents, and even US citizens, have been detained without warning before they can speak to a lawyer or see a judge. It's happening now, and it's accelerating. We've seen the difference it makes when legal responders can act quickly. Mahmoud Khalil, a 29-year-old father and graduate student, remains in a Louisiana detention center despite no criminal charges. Remesa Aztirk, a 30-year-old graduate student, was illegally taken out of Massachusetts and held for six weeks without charges or a hearing. But there is hope. Mosin Madawi, a 34-year-old legal resident detained during his citizenship interview in Vermont, had a community that was prepared. They created an emergency legal response system, which allowed his lawyer to quickly file a habeas petition blocking his transfer out of state. After two weeks, he was released and is now awaiting a fair trial. Due process is a constitutional right for everyone living in this country. We need a rapid response system, something as simple as a text alert that notifies trained legal responders who can act quickly to prevent people from being removed from mass. Cities like Portland, Maine, Ann Arbor, Michigan, and Oakland, California have created similar programs through partnerships with nonprofits and attorneys. Northampton can too. Trump has already targeted activists, queer and trans people, and BIPOC communities through executive orders and bias laws. There's real risk that detention may be next. If we don't act now, more of us could be swept into a system that denies our basic rights. Northampton must act to lead with compassion, defend due process, and protect the people who call this city home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Daniel Brind-
Hi, guys. Sorry I couldn't be in the room. As Colin mentioned, I'm here once again reiterating that the planning director, without a plan during the pandemic, passed a bunch of very questionable ordinances that gave her tremendous amount of power to, for instance, dump a giant 50-foot-tall building spanning the entire length of all you can see from my entire yard, my window, everything. It's going to be full of people that need to park somewhere. They'll be parking on our street. When asked about it, the planning director says the market will take care of it. She's Republican. That's what that means. If you believe in the market, free markets, deregulation, if you subscribe to supply-side economics, if you like organizations like Strong Towns that lobby for business interests, then you're a conservative. You're a Republican. I need the people of this town to start to understand that we have a Republican government. I don't think everybody in this council room is a Republican, but you guys are doing all the work for all the Republicans who run this city. We have a shadow government. It has nothing to do with the mayor. It's our planning board. She has a tentacle in everything. She's the reason potholes don't get fixed now. She is the reason trees get shut down and chopped down, and birds get killed without any sort of permit. Anything you can think of that's wrong with this town, including cutting my daughter's vegetable garden, is to pay for the mistakes of this planning director. She and her department can't be bothered to plan, but they insert themselves into every single otherwise democratic process. They get rid of all oversight, any review, anything that would ensure safety or the well-being of this city. They hate the city, and that's why they want to build a brand-new, disgusting, yuppie city. Boom, right on top of it. You guys can either stop that, or you can be a part of it. Thus far, you've been a part of it. I hope tonight is the beginning of people standing up against this. It's not where we want to live. It is where Caroline Mish, Director of the Planning Department, wants to live, as well as, I believe, the rest of her department, who are, you know, just as complicit. And this Wayne guy, who I think is still paid and is meeting with Strong Towns all the time, so-
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Time, and yours?
Good night, Archie.
Thank you.
Your city or town, Dan?
I'm in Northampton, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
You walked into that one.
Amelia Durbin.
Everyone, my name's Amelia Durbin. I am a resident of Northampton. I'm a 16-year-old junior at Northampton High School. I first want to address the city council and Mayor Shara and say that the schools need more funding than is proposed in the budget. There is just so, so many, I understand the complexity of the funding situation, but the reality is we need to figure out either a new system or figure out some way to get more funding for the schools because they're just kind of constantly not prioritized. So I also want to address the broader Northampton community, and I want to say that, well, my AP World teacher says all the time that when societies look inward, they start losing progress, and they're seen across history, and I think it can be applied to our city of Northampton. We're losing progress in conversations around education funding, and the fight is not, the fight is not against each other. The root of our funding issues is in the state. I am the co-chair of the Northampton Youth Commission. I'm the chair of our budget subcommittee, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but we've done a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of research with our legislators and at the state level. And while I think advocacy in our city is desperate and important, I think we also need to be directing our energy towards the state because that is where the root of the issue lies. And, and yeah, the Northampton Youth Commission is excited to be hosting Massachusetts Secretary Tuttweiler, Patrick Tuttweiler, next Tuesday on May 27. We're also hosting a total of seven public school districts to kind of talk about the struggles with funding from the state and the funding formulas that the state has when funding public education. So if you're interested in learning more about the state funding and how that impacts Northampton, it will be recorded by Northampton Open Media and put up on their website. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Zinn.
Hi, my name is Megan Zinn. I'm in Ward 3, and I'm speaking to, in support of the city budget as proposed. As we all know, there's pressure on the mayor and the council to use more of the stabilization funds to increase the school department's budget. I'm old. I've been around long enough to remember when my kids were at Bridge Street and annual school budget increases were 1% or less, when the schools had to, for example, eliminate gym classes for a period of time. I've also experienced the difference it made in the relative lack of volatility when we began to have stabilization funds ensuring annual increases of at least 4%. I appreciate the fact that the current budget has more than a 5%, I appreciate the fact that the current budget has more than a 5% increase for the schools for next year, but maintains enough in the stabilization funds to ensure we're able to fund our schools sustainably, not just for a year or two, but five years, 10 years, 15 years from now. Is it enough? Absolutely not. But until something changes in state funding formulas and charter school funding, I agree that it's the most responsible strategy.
Thank you. Mike Denno. Welcome.
Thanks for having me. I was actually down here today taking-
Your name and city or town?
Mike Denno, Northampton, yeah. I was actually down here tonight taking pictures, and I hadn't really planned on speaking here, but I was talking to some people out here, and I thought, well, maybe I'll stay and say my piece. So the thing that I'm interested in is, my personal thing is, snow plowing. I've plowed mailbox after mailbox. It seems the snowplows aren't able to plow Ryan Road without having some kind of, it looks like a video game or something. It has actually made their front page of the paper a couple of times, Florence Road and Ryan Road, all the big main roads. It seems when we have a heavy wet snowstorm, the plows are not able to slow down and not destroy the mailboxes. I think I've even spoken to you about this. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I know that we had a councillor that was supposedly an advocate for her constituents in one of the wards, and she actually got neutered by the room here. So I know that's another political football you guys have to work on. So I thought before I get into the snow season, here we are supposedly in the summer, although it's a pretty cold day today, I thought, since I'm down here taking pictures, and I know you guys don't want anyone talking about snow plowing or anything, I thought I would just address it, and maybe we could have the snowplow operators slow down, not destroy the mailboxes, and we could all be, because I talked to the lady at the DPW who's running that, and she told me, well, we're sorry it wouldn't happen, and then two years later, I had to get another mailbox. She says, well, we're sorry again. And then she explained to me how heavy wet snow destroys mailboxes, and I said, well, thank you for the explanation. Can we slow down? Still hasn't happened. So I thought I'd get in front of it, and, you know, because I was down here talking to people, a lot of people aren't happy with the way the city is being run. I just want the snowplow guys to slow down and not destroy my mailboxes. Why don't we just start with that? Okay?
Thank you. Next is Lisa Modinos. Is Lisa here? Yeah.
Applause. Lisa Modinos Florence. In opposition to opting in, councillor Clemmer said, "The risks are real, the damage could be lasting. This isn't a game, the stakes are real." While I disagree with the "sky is falling" description of opting in, I'd like to speak to the risks, stakes, and lasting damages that result from underfunding public schools. From the Gazette, "Underfunding public schools reduces the earning potential of each graduating class by millions of dollars, shrinking the local economy. And underfunding public schools increases costs for police responses and social services, straining the city's budget. But there are costs beyond capital. There is a child at stake, a child now whose needs are not being met, whose brain and body are being harmed now due to lack of supports, and whose potential is being starved. Children are at stake, like the third grader who struggles with social emotional needs and requires supports at school because they're not getting them at home, the middle schooler whose reading delays will profoundly affect their self-esteem and income potential, an autistic kindergartner whose development is being hindered due to a lack of services, a high schooler who should remain in school through age 22 but will be forced to graduate to save the district money. Hundreds of our children have these and other needs in the district, hundreds. According to DESI, 44% of the students in our district are high-needs. Our most vulnerable children's needs are not being met because of the mayor's budget." So there we are then, councillor Clemmer. This isn't a game. The damages are devastating, and the stakes are real, especially for children. Council, public education is under attack. Don't aid the federal agenda by underfunding our schools. Please prioritize children. Otherwise, you are complicit in Trump's attack on public education, and history will remember. We will remember. And lastly, to Mayor Shiara, please choose children over capital and fully fund our schools.
Next is Jean Engel.
My last name's Engel. I'll tell you a little history. No, I won't.
And yeah, your name and city or town, please.
Jean Engel, I'm from Northampton. I don't feel safe living in the Salvo House. I don't know how much it costs, but why can't you get all the drug dealers out of the house? You think it's funny? Now it's called the apartment building because he put a sign up there. Why can't you get the drug dealers out? I just wanted someone to tell me. Who do I have to go to? A senator? do I have to go to? A senator? A congressman? The governor of Massachusetts? I'm tired of this. I've been here four years. I fell on the parking lot, and I didn't get any help till I yelled out, "I need help. I have a fractured hip." I hope it'll get better. But I'm not happy. I've lived next to two drug dealers, and I don't think people know what it's like. They'll bang on your door and tell you it's not none of your business. Excuse me, use the telephone maybe next time? But I, there's a girl there. This will be 19 years. She's been a drug dealer. Someone told me take a year. I don't know. The court system is over flooded because I got assaulted with a knife in the building. I have been to court since November, have not had to say a word yet. I don't like, think it's comfortable. Between Gloucester, Southwick, 13, 10 years, five years, you even East Hampton, you can't find a place to live. I'm on so many lists. I want out. And I'm telling you, we're all talking about safety. I know the guy from Holy Oaks running the show now till August. Get us some help, because I'm tired of living with drug people coming in and out of the building and seeing it and being bombarded during the day between 11:00 and 11:15. The landlord won't do anything. Jose doesn't do anything. We need help, and I'm tired of this. But I really want to speak at my court. And I'm done. But I thank you, everybody, and especially Rothenberger. I voted for you.
Thank you. Next is Paula Reggano.
Paula, oh, Paula Reggano, Northampton. I just, I don't normally speak off the cuff, so bear with me. I just wanted to respond. I recently, I wrote in to city council, and I got a sort of standard response from my Ward One city councillor. And I just wanted to remind everybody here that layoffs, no layoffs does not equal no job cuts. To be clear, right, when we, the superintendent was quoted in the Daily Hampshire Gazette as saying, "There are no layoffs." But apparently, we didn't read the next sentence where she said, "But there will be reductions in services." Attrition, non-renewals, resignations, retirements that go unfilled means less bodies in a building, less educators in classrooms, less services rendered and available for our students. I believe we have a moral obligation to take care of one another. That means from birth to grave. And that means we take care of our children, and we take care of each other. I 1,000% support the Medicare for All. It would save this city millions of dollars in health insurance, and I believe we should fully fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Bertini.
Hi, Andrea Bertini, Ward Five. We recently made the very difficult and emotional decision to pull both our kids from Northampton Public Schools. Our kids aren't difficult cases. What they needed in the early grades was peanuts. To finally get the help one of our kids needed after six years of, quote, "war," only to have the budget constraints and the Director of Student Services unilaterally rip it away months later, without data, without warning, without a plan, and without care or concern for the learning loss, harm, or trauma being caused, and that he has continued to cause us the entire year, was the straw that broke our backs. To know if we stayed is just going to be worse at the high school, a school with staffing down to the bone, that can only offer a discriminatory, exclusionary educational model that denies kids full access to the curriculum, and to at least a restrictive environment. To have to send our kids into these isolating and light-crushing spaces with more loss to critical staffing for next year, we know we are lucky. We could try to find another way. I say all of this knowing that our kids are only two of the hundreds of kids being failed every day due to the lack of staffing, resources, and funding. So when you're asking the questions about why enrollment is declining, here is our exit interview. We have been so demoralized and discouraged by the way we've been treated, particularly by the Director of Student Services. We are choosing to leave, but it is that great, incredible, personal sacrifice, especially since we moved here for the schools. The mayor, city council, and the district administrators, whose goal should be doing what's best for our kids, need to completely change their educational moral compass. They should lead with the goal of doing what is best for our kids educationally and not by picking and choosing which kids to help while choosing to go to war with other families. I'm hopeful there will be a complete paradigm shift in the community, that the administrators and elected officials who are very intentionally in turning a blind eye to our kids who are being harmed will be moved along, be fired, not renewed, not run again, and lose elections. And we will have an opportunity to right the wrongs that have been done to the kids here. It is too late for many of our kids, as evidenced by the mayor's budget and the district's complete lack of resources being allocated to the middle and high school. This is despite the mountains of evidence showing how far behind these kids are in math and reading. The families here deserve better than the mayor's budget and the ensuing cuts to the funding, and deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Nina Shield.
Hi, Nina Shield, Ward Three, Northampton. I was going to skip public comment tonight because honestly, it's like screaming into the void since the lack of interest and constituent concerns is so palpable from all departments of this government. And then I was going to bring up more of the legitimate and reasonable concerns of the residents of Philip Place in regards to the poorly developed building that will surely be approved by tomorrow's planning board in violation of their own stated requirements for the special permit. But I also want to say something about the schools. In reference to comments that this is always how public schools have been, that sometimes gym classes get cut or this gets cut, sure, maybe so. I also went to public school in Massachusetts, and I remember when home act and shop were cut. But shouldn't we demand something better for our children in such a well-resourced town? And we do have the money. The city council just has different priorities. What could be more important than fully funding the schools? In fact, let's overfund the schools. Let's make it rain for the schools. As Dan made reference to earlier, the public school gardens are on the chopping block. The cost is $4,000 a year. The city is replacing its parking meters at the cost of $350,000 this year. It's ordering police cars at the cost of $300,000 this year. Money is there, but the priorities are clear. The villainy is almost cartoonish, the love of noble developers at the expense of the children of this town. I scream once more into the void. Please fund the schools.
Thank you. Next, Meg. Can't read the last name. Robbins.
I had to practice my cursive. Thank you for the opportunity to address this council. I'm Meg Robbins, Ward Four. I'm going to talk about the FY26 city budget. Mayor Shiara writes in her budget introductory statement that while she is adamant about the need for more state and federal funding, she also tells us, quote, "At the same time, we need strong collaboration here at home to explore the best ways to allocate our existing resources and ensure every child receives the best education possible," unquote. Community members have stood at this podium month after month in open comments saying exactly that. Council and school committee meeting after meeting. On this cold spring night, we witnessed another parent, teacher, child, concerned resident, city hall, many members stand out before this council meeting saying exactly that. We need strong collaboration here at home to explore the best ways to allocate our existing resources to ensure every child receives the best education possible. I extend my gratitude to the very small number of this council, who have accepted the opportunity to explore best ways to allocate existing resources with those who offered collaboration. Most didn't. Your essential check and balance body has abrogated the legal power you could have, even a little tiny bit, to opt for an increase in school funding. Our free cash allocation, which we can include as school funding resources, was shifted once again to capital spending. These priorities, FY26 to 30, are decided by a small mayoral picked no-minutes, no-access, closed-doors group who approved funding every single item on that CIP irregardless of its priority status except for senior center furniture. Mayor Shiara did not exhibit any interest in collaborating here at home to explore best ways to allocate resources, but she does not define what or where that home is or who lives here. The council said it has plenty of other ways to work with Mayor Shiara to increase school funding if they choose. I'm asking you now to do so. Our children depend on you. Our future depends on you.
Finish your sentence.
I'm not kidding. Ask a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mando. Name, city, or town, and-
I'm the Northampton Mandalorian. I live right here locally in Ward Three. I want to start off by saying, please do not dismiss my words tonight based off my appearance or the fact that I hide my identity under a helmet. We tell children not to judge a book by a cover, right? We need to practice what we preach. Here to speak about the school budget. Fundamentally, I believe the mayor's proposed budget, cutting schools, is unacceptable. I look around, I see a lot of gray hair, myself included, and the people on Zoom. In the next 30, 40, 50 years, we will all be elderly. We will need doctors, nurses, medical professionals. The children and young adults of today will grow up to become those medical professionals that we all need to take care of us and ourselves and our children. There is no more surefire way to burn the bridge of your future than cutting education for children. Like I said, the children and young adults will grow up to become those leaders and medical professionals that we all need. Thank you.
Okay. Next is, next is Rich Parr.
It's a hard act to follow. Thank you. My name is Rich Parr. I live in Florence, Ward Seven. I have two kids in the Northampton Public Schools, one in the sixth grade at JFK and one in the fourth of Leeds. I want to echo Tina and Megan's comments on the mayor's budget, sticking to the stability plan, which I think provided some needed historical context for this conversation. The mayor's budget would be the fourth consecutive increase of 5% or more in the city's contribution to the schools. That has not happened here in Northampton in 50 years. I agree with the calls for structural changes in the state funding formula, but until that happens, this budget continues to grow the schools' budget sustainably, I think. And I think it's, that is the discussion we need to have. You know, in regards to the strong budget, two of the members of the school committee who voted for that budget said in the debate prior to voting for that budget that they did not think that it was financially, fiscally responsible or sustainable for the city. And they may not have to balance those considerations, but the council does and the mayor does. And so I really appreciate the tough decisions that you guys all have to make. I also want to echo Nathan Chung's comments about the tone of our politics nationally and here locally. As it relates to the school funding issue, I feels like we've learned some of the worst lessons from our national politics right now, where facts are cherry-picked and personal attacks are commonplace. I think the level of rhetoric has done a disservice to the city, and I think it's hurt the perception of our schools as well. So, in closing, I do public opinion research for my job, surveys and focus groups. I don't have anything on what the citizens of Northampton think about the schools right now, although we didn't actually do a poll about housing, which is interesting that that came up at this meeting tonight. But one thing that I do know from my work across a host of issues is that there are those of us who are able to come to a public meeting like this and who are willing to speak, we often don't reflect the full community, not in terms of demographics or in terms of opinion. It's a real privilege to have the time to come to a meeting like this on a weeknight, and I want the council to reconsider the voices of-
Time, finish your sentence.
And also the people who are not able to come to a meeting like this as you consider the budget in the weeks to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I think it's Harold Wolf, maybe?
Yes, my name is Harold Wolf, and I live in Ward Three. Thank you, councillors, clerk, mayor, for hearing us tonight. Let me give a little roll call here. Bay State Village, including Warner Street and Landy Avenue, Eightview Street, 107 Williams Street, 39 Day Avenue, 30 Williams Street, 3 Elm Street. These are some projects that have received the city's approval for housing. None of it affordable housing. In every instance, the projects have been opposed by city residents. In the instances in which the projects have been completed, the negative outcomes predicted by the citizens, such as inadequate storm-water management and flooding, have come to pass. In one case, the property remains vacant. Some projects haven't been completed and never will be. Some projects are being litigated. The city is being sued. It shouldn't be this way. Nobody wants to go to court, but the process is already adversarial. In our city's instance, the presiding judges make the rules fit the case. Juries are told what their findings must be. It's not about justice. Housing is the holy grail, and more housing is the only criteria for judgment. At least in a courtroom, the rules are not arbitrary, and you have a fair chance. How is this push for more housing going? Is this emphasis on high-density, expensive housing having a positive effect? Right now, Northampton's rental vacancy rate is above the state average. The population of Northampton today is exactly the same as it was 45 years ago when I first moved to the city. It will probably be the same after I'm gone. But whether the city grows, I'd be happy with that. Stay is the same. My wish is that the city remains a nice place to live for all residents, new, established, young and old.
Thank you.
Fund our schools. Thank you.
Oh, it's just me.
James?
Yeah, just me.
Donna?
Thank you.
Hello, council. I'm just here-
Your name and city or-
Oh, sure. Sorry. James Whitbeck, Ward Four, Northampton here. State Street. Really nice place. Thing is, I don't have caricature like the Mando himself, but I think that we actually connect with a lot of people around here. I'm the tuba guy that plays on the corner. And I have a lot of friends at Pulaski Park that don't have a place. I've got a place, and it's very privileged. But what I would just like to say in terms of funding the schools, I've been a teacher for over 10 years in the public sector, not only here, but East Hampton, Westfield, and Wilberham, all across Western Mass. And I can't emphasize enough how much that's impacted my life and I would say almost 400 students that I've had, that I see every day around here. And some of us doing good, some of us not so much. But the difference is, man, you gotta, you gotta sort out the budget in terms of, at least, you know, supporting the arts and stuff like that. This is a, this is a city that I have lived in for 20 years, and I like to say, the whole point was, we moved here because of the arts. Like, there's a lot of places around here, and I hate to be comparative. I grew up in Springfield myself, and just looking for a nice place to surround myself with art and everything like that. And the thing is, I just wish, maybe we could, you know, just focus on the arts. I don't have much to say in terms of, you know, in terms of what he was talking about sewage management and all those sort of things. And I'm not a very articulate person myself, but just support the arts. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
Melissa McAborsky. I live in Northampton. You're going to hear a lot of words from the mayor in her budget presentation tonight. But what do you see? Do you see an $11.6 million surplus and children who are not getting what they need? Do you see people who can't find housing? What do you see in the city? Do you see people that are unhappy? What do you see in the city? Do you see people that are unhappy with how things are going? What kind of city do you want this to be? Do you want it to be a city for everyone or just a few? I want it to be a city for everyone. Look at what you see. Look at the facts, not the words. There will be a lot of words. Look through them and look at what you see. Vote November twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, um, my name is Luke Rotello. I am co-chair of the Communist Party USA in Western Massachusetts, and I'm a candidate for city council in Ward Five of Northampton. This austerity budget is an insult to the intelligence, the dignity and the livelihood of our community. A model of fiscal stability built on the back of our public education system, our teachers, families and students is no model of stability at all. A model for democracy where our mayor disregards the legitimacy of our school committee and our council majority refuses to act as a check on her administration is no way to stand up to the MAGA movement. I remember a meeting a few months ago where Council Clement demanded, in lieu of funding public education, that our educators find a way to, quote, "teach differently." We have a more serious proposal, which is apparently also a radical idea. Let's govern differently. It is long past time to put the needs of educators, families, students, workers and tenants first. We have a crisis of not of cash, but of priorities and it's long past time for a change. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Welcome. Your name and city or town, please?
Uh, I'm Jake Gallant, uh, Northampton. I'm actually not sure what ward. I'm like on a boundary. I need to figure that out. But, um, I just moved recently. I am a parent educator at Northampton High School, and I want to echo what everyone has said about funding the schools more. It's really sad that, um, year after year, we have to have this fight and students are really impacted by it because they see how the town is like not funding their schools and it makes them feel depressed about going to school. So, uh, we need to stop this and instead make students feel happy to be going to school to know that they are having, like, the money put aside so that they can have a good experience there. And it's just, we desperately need more money and it's just really sad. Sorry. Goodbye.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Din.
There we go. Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer James. I'm in Ward Two. I would like to speak to two things specifically for the high school. I would like to speak in support of the budget being raised to support the strong model. I know that probably won't happen, but I still want to speak to that. I wonder if you are sitting on the council and you love humanities and freedom of thought, if maybe you could put that into unwavering support of the return of an adequate number of humanities faculty to the high school you drive by every day, just so that our intrepid Northampton High School teachers can give the best foundation for critical thinking possible. We currently do not have the adequate number of humanities funding, and that was cut last year, and it's not going to be replaced. Northampton High School students are already voters. I also want you to consider the sharp loss of the sole technology support provider at Northampton High School. Without her, there will be no technology support staff in the high school building for anyone, including those who deeply need translation to teach or learn, not for teachers that need tech support just to create their lectures, or for anyone in the building. I know her position isn't technically being cut, but it is practically disappearing from the high school where that resource is deeply needed. I really hope that you'll consider the opinions that you're hearing about supporting the schools. And I would like to say, just as much as somebody who supports, um, maintaining the lower budget, feeling that they, as a speaker, represent people who aren't attending the meetings because it is a huge, um, it's a huge thing to have the ability to come to these meetings. But I would like you to consider all the families who are aware of the loss of services and the lack of support, even just in the high school itself. And parents
That was time. If you could finish your sentence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Um, we'll move on to announcements from councilors and the mayor. Counselor Perry.
Alrighty. And to go back over here. Well, this is one of my favorite times of the year. Whereas Jay Whitbeck was saying, it's time for arts to fill our streets. Salsa in the EJ Gare Plaza starts June first to August thirty-first. Bands and Brewsters coming back, June, starting June fifth. And one of my favorites is Summer on Strong, uh, starts May twenty-ninth with my good friend Nate Martel. And a full, um, schedule going from Thursday to Sunday every week. So get out there, enjoy some music, support your local businesses and be a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Counselor Maori.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate, um, the Ultimate Team at the, the high school for their tenth, uh, year of, of pulling off the Pioneer Valley Invitational that hosts, um, ninety-one players, uh, ten Canadian teams, sixty-six, uh, teams overall, twenty playing fields. It's, um, it's a huge undertaking and it is so impressive to see, uh, see, this is all volunteer-run. It's a fundraiser for the Ultimate, uh, uh, teams, but also they, um, give a donation to a peace organization. And to see all these, um, volunteers working together, it's, it's a beautiful thing. It's very intense. And, um, it, it's a real, it's making, you know, Northampton kind of a destination spot every year. So I just wanted to, you know, to, to acknowledge them and, and congratulate them and also to congratulate the Boys Varsity Team for, uh, pulling at the last minute a win over an emeris last night on senior night. So congratulations, team.
Harold.
Thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thanks. Um, yesterday I went to the ribbon cutting for Twenty-Three Laurel, which is affordable housing in Ward Two. They finished all the units in just a little bit over a year, which is absolutely amazing. Landscaping and everything and a playground. And there, um, there's going to be rent-based income units, um, some below market, and they're also accessible. And, um, it's just a beautiful place. So if you get a chance and you're up in Ward Two, you should walk through there and see what they did. Very impressive. And there's gonna be twenty more families up there now that have a nice new home to live in.
Counselor Olivaro.
Yes. Um, on May twenty-sixth, on a Monday, Florence is having their Memorial Day Parade. Take off. You have to be at Trinity Row Park between nine-thirty and quarter of ten. Please join us. It is just a absolutely beautiful memorial for all our veterans who served our country and people now who are retired and living with a memory of the lost ones that they've loved and the ones that have come back home. So please join our Village of Florence on the Memorial Day Parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Doug.
Counselor Doug. Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, mention that recently I became the chair of the Ordinance Review Committee, along with, um, Counsel Perry as a vice chair and Stan Molten and the members of the public. We are, we recently formed the, uh, Ordinance Review Committee, and our next meeting is on Wednesday, uh, June eleventh at six P M. And I just wanted to invite anyone from the public, people in the city who have any ideas about ordinances that you think need to be looked at in the city, suggestions for changes to be made, or perhaps an ordinance that you think doesn't even need to be, doesn't even need to exist. Just let us know. Um, so yeah, Wednesday, June eleventh. Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, I have an announcement, a reminder that we have moved our Thursday, June nineteenth meeting. A council meeting has been rescheduled to Wednesday, June eighteenth to avoid the Juneteenth holiday. Also, the Free Florence Summer Concert Series runs, uh, every Thursday from six-thirty to eight P M. It's on the Florence Civic Center lawn. It's, uh, May twenty-ninth to September fourth this year, and, uh, kicks off on May twenty-ninth with the Northampton High School Band and the Northampton with a caravan kitchen food truck, and you can see the full lineup at florencemass.com. I'm also holding office hours, uh, coming up Tuesday, June third, from six to seven-thirty at the Lilly Library. That's with Ward Five School Committee member Ann Hennessy. And then, uh, Thursday, June fifth, from two-thirty to four-thirty P M. at the City Council Office in City Hall. Other announcements. Mayor Shara.
Good evening. I, you guys covered a lot of them, but, uh, just two more. In addition to the parade on Monday, thank you, Captain LaBarge, um, there's also the Leeds Memorial Day ceremony that happens the day before on Sunday, uh, May twenty-fifth at one P M., and that's at the Leeds Memorial Park, which is across from the Leeds Elementary School. Um, so it's one P M. on Sunday. And also I just want, uh, to tell people about the Thirty-First Annual Forbes Garden Tour. Um, that's on June fourteenth and, uh, ten A M. to four P M., rain or shine. And you can get tickets to that, um, by going to the Friends of Forbes section on the Forbes, uh, site, which is forbeslibrary.org. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. Uh, how's the council doing? Do we need a recess?
We free recess, please.
Okay. Uh, we'll do eight minutes. We'll come back at eight o'clock. Hampton City Council. Next on our agenda is presentations. And we have a presentation from Mayor Shara. This is the fiscal year 2026 budget message. Welcome, Mayor Shara.
Thank you. Good evening again, councilors. Get all settled in here. Thank you to those who clearly have already read this budget message. There are many words, as was noted, and gave a little bit of a preview, but I am going to read it now. So this is to the honorable members of the City Council. And I also want to thank the department heads that are here and also the public, of course, who are here. I submit for your consideration and approval, the proposed $145,301,999 fiscal year 2026 budget for the city of Northampton in accordance with Article 7, Section 7.3 of our charter. The budget is comprised of $129,543,130 general fund dollars, general fund, combined with four enterprise funds budgets for water at $6,945,000, sewer $6,177,500, solid waste at $639,883, and stormwater and flood control, which is $1,996,486. This budget proposal represents a 4.8% increase from the current FY25 City of Northampton budget that ends with the fiscal year on June 30th, 2025. The FY26 budget is the final budget of my first term as mayor of Northampton. When I first took office in January of 2022, I made commitments to responsibly manage the city's finances and taxpayer dollars, provide as much support for our public schools as possible, maintain critical city services and infrastructure, support our hardworking civil servants, take necessary action on climate in accordance with the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan, and build out the Division of Community Care as a new model of public safety. This budget is not just numbers on a page. It is how I, in collaboration with our department heads and finance team, have used the resources available to uphold these commitments to meet the needs and to live up to the shared values of our community. I am proud of what the city has achieved with discipline, compassion, and robust collaboration. Public school funding has increased greatly. Our climate goals are operational and advancing. The Division of Community Care is delivering results, helping over 1,000 individuals. And through careful, transparent stewardship, we have kept our city on solid financial ground. These investments are deliberate, thoughtful, and rooted in a long-term vision for Northampton's success. This budget delivers on that vision, and it reflects Northampton's shared values: equity, resilience, and responsibility, and channels them into action. In uncertain times, my commitment is to lead with steadiness, transparency, and respect for every resident. This is how we protect what makes Northampton strong. As I write this budget message, I can't ignore headline after headline of uncertainty and turmoil in the country and around the world that flash past. The world we inhabit today is more volatile than it was in January 2022. And back then, we were still in the declared emergency of the pandemic. The level of anxiety in Northampton is palpably high because national instability, economic uncertainty, and deliberate attacks on public institutions are not abstractions. They are daily realities that shape what is possible for our city. Community members fear they or loved ones will be picked up by federal agents. Rights are being stripped. Gender-affirming and reproductive care restrictions are growing. Medicaid cuts are being threatened. History, research, and the identities of people are being erased. Environmental regulations and protections are being scrapped. And nascent gains towards addressing the climate crisis are rolling very quickly backwards. The public health system is being undermined from within by leaders who spout misinformation. Threats, bluster, and toying with policies, laws, and services that are relied on for survival are daily occurrences. The federal government has begun canceling grants to nonprofits and state and local governments. In Massachusetts, federal funds make up about 25% of the state's budget revenue. In addition, the Commonwealth receives another $5 billion in federal grants outside of the budget, which helps support programs and services throughout the state. We don't know yet how much of this critical funding will ultimately be cut or how deeply it will impact our local funding. However, as reflected in this budget, the city has already lost some grant funding that supported Northampton's Department of Health and Human Services. It feels like every day we learn more about funds that have been stable and dependable, being pulled from organizations and agencies that provide essential services and support the well-being of our community. The loss to these programs, coupled with the economic turmoil, is going to increase needs in already stretched areas like food security, housing supports, mental health resources, and substance use care. We anticipate that needs, which are already growing, will compound. One indicator of this is that the number of people experiencing houselessness in the United States on the annual single-night count in 2024 was the highest ever recorded. Preliminary reports from the count for 2025 for our county show a 90% increase in unhoused individuals throughout Hampshire County over the last year. Another indicator is that people accessing local food banks, like the Northampton Survival Center, are increasing again after leveling off post-pandemic, while the U.S. Department of Agriculture has canceled $440,000 worth of funding to the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts. Additionally, the broader economy is teetering as sharp, sudden, and shifting tariffs have jeopardized America's trading relationship with the rest of the world. The chaos has the potential to impact the local economy and in turn, the municipal budget. Yet, we still have a legal obligation to implement a budget at the beginning of the fiscal year using our best estimates for revenue and spending and ensure by the end of that fiscal year that the budget is balanced. Unlike the federal government, we can't run any deficits. We can't print money, and we can't use fuzzy math. Northampton uses fiscal management principles guided by the Commonwealth's budget experts at the Division of Local Services, which are designed to help cities anticipate and manage unexpected yet inevitable economic disruptions and emergencies. To briefly summarize, we use cautious budget estimates that aim to generate an annual surplus. Then the surplus is used to maintain reserve funds and support immediate capital needs. Reserves are critical not only for emergencies, large and small, but also to support financing for large essential capital projects. Without well-managed reserves, emergencies will wreak havoc on city services and critical infrastructure maintenance will get deferred, leading to costly problems in the future. Northampton's fiscal strategy also seeks to overcome the conservative cap on property tax revenue from Proposition 2 and 1/2. I want to be as clear as possible. Under the Proposition 2 and 1/2 cap, the city's revenue cannot keep up with covering continually rising costs. We constantly face a difficult choice: either raise property taxes beyond the cap through voter-approved overrides or reject these periodic overrides and make deep, across-the-board cuts to essential services. The approach that has best addressed rising costs and allowed Northampton to rise above the cap is the Fiscal Stability Plan that began in 2013 and has guided every budget that I've submitted. The linchpin in the Fiscal Stability Plan is the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. Most reserve funds support finite capital projects or emergencies with one-time funding sources. The Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund provides one-time fund transfers that temporarily support inevitable rising recurring expenses of our operating costs until the next property tax override. Voter approval of periodic overrides is essential to the success of the plan as it provides sustainable recurring revenue to cover rising operating costs, replenishes the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund, and also supports long-term budget planning. By using the fund to space out overrides over several years, we increase the likelihood of continued voter support. The elements of the Fiscal Stability Plan were presented to voters during the override referendums of 2013 and 2020. With the passage of these overrides, Northampton voters have effectively ratified the plan. I appreciate that not all residents agree with or feel they can afford to periodically raise taxes to support schools and city services. Ultimately, the continuation of the Fiscal Stability Plan and its reliance on periodic overrides rests on the judgment of Northampton voters. We have been anticipating the next override referendum to be scheduled ahead of the FY2027 budget, though unexpected changes in our revenue streams and our spending needs can always prompt a reassessment, as was the case last year. Education, the largest component of the city budget, has been greatly supported by the Fiscal Stability Plan. In the 13 years since the beginning of the plan, the city's direct general fund contribution to the Northampton Public Schools has had an average annual increase of 4.77%. In the previous 13 years before the plan, the average increase was 2.1%, including multiple years where the increase was less than a percent. No municipal plan alone can solve all of the challenges of education funding without effective partnership from the state and federal government. However, the Fiscal Stability Plan has strengthened our ability to invest in the future of our children and our city by promoting stable budgeting and increasing revenues through overrides. Moving on to revenues. The city's total available new revenue for FY26 is $4,968,742. Additionally, we are using $1,403,757 from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund to balance the budget. Local taxes, which are 67.6% of the city's revenue, are estimated at $87,570,940. Of that total, real estate and personal property tax revenue make up 93% of our local taxes, or $81,235,850. This includes the 2.5% increase to property tax allowed under Proposition 2 and 1/2 and new growth. New growth comes from new construction, renovations, and other property tax increases. While we aim to meet this estimate, new construction depends heavily on the broader economy as well as the cost and availability of materials. To create more revenue capacity, this budget aggressively pushes many of our revenue estimates higher this year. This is a strategic risk, particularly with the great uncertainty in the economy, but we are taking it to sustain the increases to MPS provided throughout FY25 that were stated would be recurring and to support additions to MPS and public safety in the FY26 budget. One of the large increases to our revenue estimates is motor vehicle excise tax, which is increasing by $355,000, or a total of $3.25 million. This increase is an example of the strategic risks we are taking as it's higher than the three-year average, though we anticipate a stronger-than-usual fourth-quarter collection due to the widely-reported surge in pre-tariff car purchases. Given the ongoing uncertainty around tariffs, we will closely monitor any fluctuations in this revenue stream throughout FY26. Hotel motel excise tax revenue is increasing by 11.43% or $100,000 to the total of $975,000. And meals tax revenue is increasing by 3.17% or $23,000 to a total of $748,000. Cannabis revenue, which, like other excise tax revenue, goes into the general fund to benefit all city and school services, had dropped annually for the three years after its first full year in FY2020. In FY2024, it began to reverse the trend and has continued to climb back up. For FY26, we are increasing the revenue estimate by 22.12% to $900,000. Many charges for services are increasing significantly, including parking meter receipts at 11.37%. Parking lot revenue, 21.21%. Parking kiosk receipts, 32.43%. Park mobile revenue, 58.28%. And ambulance services at 13.3%. These five lines represent a total of $658,000 in additional revenue. The largest portion of local charges for services is the pass-through for Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School for their out-of-district student tuition. It is increasing by $426,624 in FY26. And these funds go directly to Smith Voke to support its budget. For FY26, state aid makes up 13.6% of the general fund and is estimated at $16,183,950, which excludes the offsets. And this is based on the cherry-sheet figures from the House version of the state budget. This includes a $411,150 increase in Chapter 70 School Aid, reflecting a doubling of the per-student rate from $75 in the governor's budget proposal to $150 in the House version. However, the state also increased Northampton's required net school spending by $1,356,417. After accounting for state assessments charged to the city, the net increase in all-state aid from FY26 is $431,899. We will continue to monitor the state budget as it moves through the Conference Committee and remain hopeful that our estimated aid will not be significantly decreased or reduced. Licenses and permits, which comprise 1.13% of the operating budget, are increasing overall by 15.3% for an additional $194,446 in revenue. The largest increases in this category are building, plumbing, wire, and periodic inspection permits, increasing by 18.5, 27.2, 16, and 45.6%, respectively. Fines and forfeits are increasing by 22.2% with an increase to the parking ticket revenue of $138,260. The largest increase to estimated revenue is from investment income, which has enjoyed strong performance since our treasurer astutely moved city funds into a new investment vehicle tied to the Secure Overnight Financing Rate, or SOFR. Before FY23, the city earned an annual average of about $200,000 from investment income. After moving into the SOFR account in the third quarter of FY23, that number jumped to 1.1 million and then to 2.6 million in FY24. While we haven't closed the books on FY25 yet, investment income continues to come in strong. Investment income is tied to interest rates and is an inherently volatile revenue source. Assuming it can be relied on to balance the budget carries a risk, particularly in an unstable economy. Additionally, this account replaced the previous type for benchmarking interest rates and could itself be discontinued or changed in the future. Nevertheless, this is another example of a strategic risk we have chosen to take as we are now using $2,078,300 estimate for FY26 investment income, reflecting a 1,065.6% increase. Moving on to expenditures, starting with education, the largest expenditure piece of the pie. Every conversation about school funding is personal to me. I talk with students. I talk with caregivers. I hear directly from educators who are doing the work every day. I want the very same thing for Northampton's children to have the very best possible education supported by the resources they need to succeed. I see dedicated educators and administrators working hard to support our students, often in challenging circumstances and facing the same structural issues as so many districts across the Commonwealth. I am proud of the progress Northampton's schools continue to make, and I believe in the strength and the potential of our public education system. Each year, the city must carefully balance limited resources with wide-ranging needs, not only in our public schools but across every department serving Northampton. Public education represents the largest portion of the direct general fund expenditures at 42.99%. When we include the additional education costs borne by the general fund, such as charter school sending, out-of-district school choice tuition, and fixed employee benefits for insurance and retirement, the total share of the general fund devoted to education rises to 54.63%. In FY26, MPS funding from the general fund will increase to $43,894,984 from $41,455,340 in FY25. This is a $2.44 million increase. This $2.44 million increase reflects how deeply we value our schools and how carefully we balance the rest of the city's obligations. Initial budget projections made in January promised at least a 4% increase for MPS. And as I said at the April 10th, 2025 School Committee Meeting, my final budget will provide every possible dollar we can responsibly and sustainably direct to the Northampton Public Schools. The city's base contribution increased by 6.3% over the FY25 budget. However, when factoring in other sources of the annual appropriation in addition to the general fund, which are the amount of last year's Medicaid reimbursement from the new Special Education Stabilization Fund and the second year of the Smith College gift, the overall increase is 5.88%. If the School Committee and City Council vote during the year to allocate the remaining annual amount from the Special Education Stabilization Fund, the total increase for MPS will be 6.3%. In addition to the direct increase to the MPS budget, In addition to the direct increase to the MPS budget, I am also requesting that the City Council approve replenishing the Special Education Stabilization Fund using nearly 300,000 of unspent funds in the free cash account. This will replenish the fund to the maximum amount allowed under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E, which is 2% of net school spending estimated for FY 25. The intention of the School Committee and the City Council expressed in their votes last year while establishing the fund has been to maintain the fund using federal Medicaid reimbursements, which to date have been fairly consistent. However, with the current federal administration and Congress exploring major Medicaid cuts for the first time, that source could be at risk. Regardless of any federal decisions about Medicaid, the FY 26 budget will include an initial $209,175 appropriation to MPS from the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which will allow for an additional $140,825 from the fund to reach the maximum annual appropriation of $350,000 under the requirements of the fund. The Northampton Public Schools section of this budget book includes the $46,610,094 budget that was voted by the School Committee and submitted to the Mayor's Office referred to as the "strong budget." The requested amount of $5,154,750 is a 12.43% increase from the FY 25 appropriation to MPS. Unfortunately, it is not possible to build a fiscally responsible budget based on this request. And some of the School Committee members who voted for the recommendation even acknowledged that that in practice, it would be fiscally irresponsible. The requested increase, combined with the $1.53 million rise in fixed employee benefit costs, exceeds the city's total new revenue for FY 26, even after including the withdrawal from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund and before accounting for any other city department. We were able to reach the $43.9 million appropriation amount by stretching the budget in every way conceivable within the realm of responsibility. This was done by further limiting spending increases in other departments, aggressively adjusting revenue estimates upwards, as we just detailed, and again by tapping the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund for a third year in a row. There is no change to our override timeline under the Fiscal Stability Plan, which anticipates a $3 million override for FY 27, with the next override not expected until FY 2031. Accommodating a 12.43% increase for MPS would have required voter approval of a $5 million override this spring, twice the size of the 2020 override, followed by an additional $4 million override four years later. School financing has been extremely challenging since the pandemic, when, to cover the cost of increased hiring and compensation, MPS overly relied on one-time federal pandemic relief funds and spent down the School Choice Reserve Fund, which had peaked at $4 million in 2020. In my first budget message in May 2022, I said of the MPS budget, "The use of (reserves being school choice) greater than incoming revenue and one-time federal funds to such a degree will create a gap that will exceed the city's capacity to raise additional revenue to cover it. And I am concerned about our ability to maintain our educational programs and staffing at current levels in near-future years." End quote. Higher costs combined with the exhaustion of one-time funding sources led to widening MPS shortfalls in FY 24 and in FY 25. The city has responded with record funding increases using other budgetary adjustments and transfers from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. This will be the fourth consecutive fiscal year of increases in the city's direct contribution to MPS of at least 5%, which has not happened in the previous 50 years. From FY 2022, when I entered this office, through the upcoming FY 26, the city's annual direct contribution to MPS will have increased by $10,433,088, or by 31% in four years. Additionally, MPS's annual net school spending, which encompasses both direct spending and indirect spending, such as employee benefits, in FY 25 is 144% of the state's determined minimum. This is the highest such percentage for MPS recorded by the State's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, going back to FY 1993. Our increased spending for MPS has mitigated, but unfortunately has not eliminated the need for classroom staff level reductions. Though during this period, some positions were also restored and were created. From FY 23 through the upcoming FY 26, the overall, the net overall staff position reduction will be about 12, with a net reduction in teaching positions of about 11 and a net increase in paraeducator positions of about four. Most of these reductions were through attrition and were through retirements. Despite the staffing level changes, because of declining enrollment, teacher-student ratios and teacher-paraeducator student ratios have continued to improve over the last several years. Going back to FY 2018, the student-teacher ratio was 9.8 to 1 and declined to 8.8 to 1 in FY 22. In FY 25, it was down 8.5 to 1. Using the projected enrollment for FY 26, which may still change before the school year starts, the ratio will be 8.15 students to one educator. While including paraeducators, the student-to-staff ratio was 7 to 1, 7.1 to 1 in FY 2018, 6.05 to 1 in FY 22, and 5.8 to 1 in FY 25, with an FY 26 projection of 5.5 students to one educator. I want to make sure to note that these numbers differ from those compiled by DESI because DESI appears to use a narrower definition of what constitutes a teacher than MPS does when we are counting staff and when we're calculating our ratios. Of course, this is just data, and it's not people's lived experiences. I know that students and educators in Northampton and across the country are facing real challenges. Meanwhile, public education is under attack like never before by the federal administration. There's a great deal of work ahead to push for more support from both the state and federal governments. At the same time, we need strong collaboration here at home to explore the best ways to allocate our existing resources and ensure every child receives the best education possible. We must keep pushing the Commonwealth to do more. Once again, school districts across Massachusetts are facing cuts, and cities and towns are having the same stressful conversations about how to meet the needs of all municipal services with huge increases under Prop. Two and a Half. Northampton's Chapter 70 State Aid only accounts for 16% of its actual net school spending for the Northampton Public Schools. This has fallen since the 1993 Education Reform Act, when it was 33%. In the past 25 years, Chapter 70 State Aid has increased only 13.3%. In that same time, required net school spending has increased by 75.8%, and our actual net school spending in Northampton has increased by 136.7%. I will continue to say emphatically that we also need charter school funding reform. The FY 26 House budget shows Northampton's charter school sending tuition has crossed the $3 million mark at $1,141,217, and with the charter reimbursement being $529,356. Since FY 2017, $23.5 million from the general fund have gone to charter school sending tuition. With the approved expansion of the Pioneer Valley Chinese Emergent Charter School by 100 seats and the approval for the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts Charter School to reduce their sending districts from 34 to 18, with Northampton as one of the 18, we can expect the amount of students and general fund revenue leaving for charter schools will increase. This flawed funding formula disproportionately impacts municipalities like Northampton that have multiple charter schools around them that pull district students. Those funds are urgently needed in our local district, where rising costs and growing needs have outpaced stagnant Chapter 70 aid. I do want to thank Senator Joe Comerford and Representative Lindsay Sabadosa, who have been pushing incredibly hard for the needed reforms to the structural problem of Chapter 70. I also want to thank the Northampton High School students who have been organizing and calling for more state funding, and you heard from Amelia tonight, who's been leading on that. It has been so powerful to see them standing up here and at the State House, creating an advocacy video and working to bring Secretary of Education Patrick Tuttweiler to Northampton to hear directly from us and neighboring districts about the challenges of increasing needs and skyrocketing costs without increased state funding to help districts cover them. We must stand with our students and demand that the Commonwealth step up and fix its funding schemes that are sending districts across the Commonwealth into deficits and cuts. The other school district in Northampton, Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School, is receiving a 4% increase in the city's appropriation towards its $11,794,397 budget. The remaining budget of $10,015,315 is made up of out-of-district student tuition paid by the sending communities. These funds, as I said, are a pass-through in the city budget. The per-student cost is increasing from $20,847, $47, as I said, in FY 25 to $21,693 in FY 26. The out-of-district tuition is set by DESI, and it is estimated that a total of 589 students will attend Smith Voke in the fall, and Northampton students will make up 23% of the student body. Moving on to employee benefits. Health insurance is the second-largest expenditure after education, and it is the largest fixed cost to the general fund. For FY 26, it totals $15.59 million, an increase of $1.4 million, and uses 22% of the new revenue coming into the city. The most subscribed plan is Health New England, which increased by 10.5%. And with the other plans, the total percent increase is 9.88%. The percent split for the monthly premium cost between the city of Northampton and employees for HMOs has remained 80/20, 80% to 20% for the last 19 years. And PPOs have been a 50/50 split for the last 15 years. Employee benefits as a whole are $25,966,783 and comprise 20% of the budget. Moving on to general government. In general government, there are mostly minimal increases under 3%, with two departments seeing decreases. Notably, the City Clerk's Office was able to do some restructuring, which resulted in the replacement of a vacant full-time position with a part-time records position. Information Technology Services, ITS, continues to find ways to optimize and consolidate systems and infrastructure, resulting in savings, while also ensuring that all technology expenses are accurately budgeted. ITS covers all technology services and needs for city departments and MPS, which are continuously growing and represents only 1.6% of the budget. Priorities have included upgrading cyber and network security and ensuring backup and redundancy on critical systems. There is a decrease in the Personnel Services, PS, lines total due to change in positions. However, there is an increase in ITS's operations and maintenance, OM, lines, to account for increases such as further consolidation into IPS, software licensing increases, cybersecurity training, email encryption, backup solutions, firewall maintenance, and increases in telecommunications services. This includes the necessary move to a new computer-aided dispatch record management system, which is CAT-RMS system, for fire rescue and police with the discontinuation of the previous system. Moving on to climate action and project administration. Kappa embodies Northampton's commitment to sustainability, resilience, and efficient governance. In its first full year of capacity, Kappa has delivered tangible results by securing and implementing over $650,000 in energy efficiency projects, restoring solar PV production and associated renewable energy credits, reducing municipal energy use by 5.3% and driving down public EV charging costs while ensuring financial sustainability. Sustainability, excuse me. Beyond climate metrics, Kappa's work reflects a broader ethic, bringing project management discipline to city operations, ensuring resources are spent wisely, and every opportunity for carbon reduction and cost savings is captured. Looking ahead, Kappa is not only advancing Northampton's ambitious decarbonization goals, but is also helping modernize how city projects are scoped, procured, and executed. Whether developing a shared municipal vehicle pool, rebalancing city-building control systems for maximum efficiency and energy savings, or streamlining procurement processes for better transparency and accountability, I have challenged Kappa to set a high standard for how Northampton prepares for a changing climate while delivering value to residents. The PS budget increase is higher as it reflects increases for the finalized personnel changes, which occurred after the FY 25 budget was set, and FY 26 step increases. The OM budget increase helps support the implementation and maintenance of the new vehicle pool. For public safety, there has been an ongoing conversation about the increase in call volume that public safety has been experiencing since the latter part of the pandemic, in particular in fire rescue calls. I have flagged this in the last two budget messages and have been working closely with Chief Peles and Assistant Chief Lumberg to build towards sustainably addressing the needs for additional staffing. In FY 26, we are adding eight firefighter positions to the fire rescue budget. The department is applying for a FEMA grant that, if awarded, for any or all of those eight positions, would fund the first three years of employment. We expect to hear the outcome in the fall. We have budgeted for the position starting in October 2025 in case the grant is not released by the federal administration or it is not successful. I thank the fire rescue department for its collaboration as we work to meet rising demands, and I am grateful that these additional hires will provide the needed staffing. As call volumes increase, the Public Safety Communication Center, or Dispatch, must also keep pace with the demands of its 24-hour operations. Their work is already high-pressure and demanding, and it becomes even more challenging when a dispatcher must cover a double shift due to an absence. To help manage the increased call volume and maintain adequate staffing levels, the FY 26 budget includes funding for an additional dispatcher position. There is a decrease in the Northampton Police Department, MPD, budget due to the change in personnel to fill the vacancies created by the appointment of Chief Cartledge. While hiring and remaining fully staff has continued to be a challenge for MPD, the ability to hire student officers to begin training for anticipated vacancies has significantly shortened the time positions remain vacant and has resulted in reduced overtime costs needed to fill shifts to meet minimum staffing levels. In the Building Department, which is part of public safety, bless you, Building Department has an increase for a part-time building inspector to help meet the expanded inspection requirements under the 10th Edition of the State Building Code. This update now mandates additional inspections for all short-term rentals. With this change, we anticipate an increase in inspections and a corresponding rise in department revenue. Moving on to Health and Human Services. The Department of Health and Human Services has had impressive success in securing and maintaining grant funding. However, the current federal attacks on public health funding are hitting the department with significant cuts in state and federal grants. The Division of Community Care, DCC, has benefited from substantial support from the state's Equivalve Approaches to Public Safety EEPs grant. While this year's funding was not included in the House version of the budget, it remains in the Senate version, and we are working closely with our legislative delegation to advocate for its preservation. Given this uncertainty, the FY 26 budget does not fund seven currently vacant DCC positions. These roles were originally planned to expand hours and coverage as funding allowed. In the meantime, our priority is to sustain the strong level of service that stakeholders have come to expect and rely upon from the DCC while we continue to pursue stable, long-term support for this essential program. DHHS coordinates regional emergency preparedness planning for Hampshire County through the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. Unfortunately, we've learned that we are losing $121,000 from this grant, which is forcing budget adjustments, including freezing a vacant public health nurse position. Additionally, a Bureau of Infectious Disease and Laboratory Sciences grant, which has supported infectious disease monitoring, public health nursing, and community vaccine clinics, has been canceled, and the loss of $283,000 will impact our ability to provide these services to protect public health. These are incredibly devastating losses for DHHS, and I commend Commissioner O'Leary and the DHHS team for their resilience and their dedication to harm reduction, improving and safeguarding public health, and equitably meeting community needs during this very challenging time. For those of you who are following along the book, if you'll allow me to go off-book for a moment, I have something to add, which I think will highlight the changing and mercurial time that we are in. So just on Friday, after this budget was printed, it was reported that a federal judge granted a preliminary injunction pausing an $11 billion cuts in public health departments. So with that injunction, there's a possibility that we will get that Biddle's $283,000 grant back. So we are hopeful and waiting to see if that happens. But again, these things are moving constantly all the time. So that was just Friday afternoon that that was reported. Moving on to Senior Services. Senior Services continues to welcome new members and has seen an increase in the average number of members using the Senior Center daily as they expand programs and services to meet the needs and interests of Northampton's older adults. In order to increase funding for transportation services, other operations and maintenance lines were reduced, leaving the Senior Center of Services budget to increase by 2.67%. Veteran Services is increasing by $138,026, or 22.23%. This is due in great part to an increase in the use of benefits for Northampton veterans, after decreasing for the last eight years. The number of communities served by the Central Hampshire Veteran Services District has increased by two to 14 communities with the addition of Hatfield and Granby. The Commonwealth's Chapter 115 Veterans Benefits Program provides a 75% reimbursement to communities with the potential for 100% reimbursement for houseless veterans. Each community in the district pays its own veterans' benefits and receives direct reimbursement from the state. Moving on to Culture and Recreation. The four Culture and Recreational Services Departments, Forbes and Lilly Libraries, Parks and Recreation, and Arts and Culture are all seeing budget increases of 2.5% or less. These departments play a vital role in enriching our community and providing valuable services to residents of all ages. I want to draw attention to the cuts to the I want to draw attention to the cuts to the Institute of Museum and Library Services, IMLS, by executive order in March by the Trump administration. These cuts threaten to eliminate statewide library services that our local libraries provide. These include databases, interlibrary loan, e-library services, summer reading programs, and early literacy development, and programs to increase access for people with vision loss. In April, I joined mayors and city officials across the Commonwealth in calling on the Massachusetts Congressional delegation to fight for this very small but critical federal funding. For the Department of Public Works, the DPW, we are working through collective bargaining to address ongoing staffing shortages that have made it increasingly difficult to meet service demands. I know how hard Director LaScalia and her limited team are working to address road conditions following the especially tough winter that we've had, while also keeping up with maintenance and operations across all DPW divisions. The cost for skilled labor has rapidly increased due to shortages for qualified personnel and strong competition from the private sector. As we work to rebuild the DPW staff as quickly as possible and to remain competitive in this tight labor market, we will not be funding four positions this year, two in the general fund, and one in water enterprise, and one in the sewer enterprise. The four enterprise funds, water, sewer, solid waste, and stormwater, and flood control, are mostly level-funded and self-sustaining. The reserves in the funds will be used to support the operational and capital project budgets for each utility. As the cost of trash and compost disposal have risen considerably, the solid waste enterprise is continuing to operate at a small deficit, which is being filled by the retained earnings. There are no water and sewer usage rates or base charge increases in FY26. Coca-Cola had represented 25% of the water and sewer enterprise revenue. At this point, with their greatly reduced operations, they are down to approximately 10% of the revenue in those enterprises. Coca-Cola's latest projected termination of operations in North Hampton is at the end of the calendar year 2025. The base rate fees that were increased in FY24 are what is keeping the water and sewer enterprises balanced, as there has not been an increase in usage rates since 2020. Along with our federal and state legislators and the state's Executive Office of Economic Development, we continue to advocate for a sale of the building to another user that will support our enterprise funds. The City of North Hampton has 13 collective bargaining agreements, seven covering city employees and six for school employees. Each is negotiated in good faith, reflecting a commitment to fair wages, benefits, and working conditions for the people who deliver essential services to North Hampton every day. Collective bargaining is not just a legal requirement. It is an important process that ensures the city and its workforce work in partnership to meet community needs. All city collective bargaining agreements are being negotiated this year. Once these agreements are in place, it is the city's responsibility to support and fund them, which the FY26 budget will fulfill. This budget focuses on the fundamentals: providing sustainable funding for public education, maintaining essential services, supporting staff, managing within Proposition 2 and 1/2, and protecting the city's long-term financial stability. It fulfills North Hampton's obligations while making disciplined choices that reflect real financial constraints. Not every department is highlighted in this message, as I focus on those with the most significant changes. However, every department and both school districts in North Hampton provide necessary services to the functioning and the well-being of our city. I am deeply grateful for their daily hard work, care, and their dedication. The process that city departments go through for creating their next fiscal year budget, while concentrated from January to May, is actually a continual process throughout the year. I meet with most department heads at least monthly, and they communicate often with the finance director. We regularly discuss staffing, operational needs, challenges, and overall performance, not just to stay on budget for the year, but to refine it and to engage in longer-term planning. Together, we aim to address needs sustainably, using the resources available as effectively as possible. I am grateful for their professionalism and commitment to the city and that of their hard-working staff. To serve the City of North Hampton alongside them is the great privilege of my position, and I thank them. Special thanks to the Mayor's Office staff, Mayoral Assistant and LGBTQIA+ Executive Office Liaison Sydney Fahey, COVID-19 Economic Recovery Grants Administrator Abby Stone, Administration Licensing and Economic Development Coordinator Annie Lesko, Chief of Staff Alan Wolfe, and Finance Director Sharlee Nardi. They are the real people who manage daily requests from residents and businesses and community organizations, coordinate city communications and media relations, support economic development and key partnerships, and oversee licensing and the License Commission. They write and manage grants, track and fulfill federal and ARPA reporting, and produce the Capital Improvement Plan in the city's annual budget. They lead policy development and legislative advocacy, maintain close working relationships with state and federal elected officials and agency partners, and coordinate citywide initiatives. They also work directly with constituents to tackle often complex issues, resolving them with professionalism and with care. As always, I and the City of North Hampton owe a special debt of gratitude to Finance Director Nardi for this FY26 budget and for her skilled, dedicated stewardship of the city's finances and financial departments. Her professionalism and years of extensive experience in municipal finance, as well as her patience and her good humor, are invaluable. Lastly, thank you to the City Council for your service to the city. This is an exceptionally challenging time to be in public service, and I am grateful for your deliberative and your thoughtful work. I look forward to working with department heads throughout the budget process to answer your questions and provide additional information as needed. Respectfully submitted, Jean-Louis Chara, Mayor. Thank you for your patience and listening to all that.
Thank you, Mayor Chara. We will take questions during the financial orders later on the agenda. Which brings us to the Consent Agenda. And I'll read the Consent Agenda and then ask if there are any removals. The minutes of April 17, 2025. Approved 25.215 Comcast Petition to Install Underground Conduit for Cable Service to 589 Park Hill Road. That was the public hearing we heard earlier. 25.250A Appointments to Board of Registars and Planning Board. There was a positive recommendation on reappointment of Joseph Tarantino to the Board of Registars from City Services on May 12. And then note, the appointment of Cameron Roach to the Planning Board will be taken up at the committee's next meeting, June 9. So the only one here for our vote is Joseph Tarantino to the Board of Registars, a reappointment. Are there any removals? Entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilor LaBarge, seconded by Councilor Dubbs. No discussion on the Consent Agenda, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The Consent Agenda is approved. I love this all being here, so we don't have to do the roll calls. The next items on our agenda. Is called for a recess?
No, 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 I'm saying, don't need a recess.
Don't need a recess, okay. Financial orders on first reading. And the first nine here are the FY25 Second Round of Community Preservation Committee, Community Preservation Act, Funding Recommendations. And I wanted to ask the council, in terms of thinking about the length of tonight's meeting, we have a few options. We could refer all nine of the orders to Finance. However, Finance can't meet before our next meeting on June 5. So that Finance meeting would happen between June 5 and June 18. Then we would vote on the CPA orders on June 18. There is no time concern with these CPA orders. It would be fine if they were approved by them. Another option is that we could go through some of them and kind of set a time limit that we might want to use so that we can get to the budget items and the other items on our agenda before it gets too late. I would love to be out of here by 11:00 tonight, if possible. And/or we can go through them all. So what is the pleasure of the council? Mayor?
I mean, Mayor, a councilor.
Does mean something.
You're up for mayor.
Yeah, yeah. It's gonna be a mouthful.
Okay. I was just gonna say, I'm comfortable with referring these to Finance now that we know about the lack of a time constraint. It would have to be between June 11 and June 17. Can't do before June 11, but I think that will work. So my recommendation would be to refer it to Finance at that time, to save time here.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Thank you. I think this is the right way to go. And I'll bring it to Finance, because you're looking at nine of them tonight, plus we have others, plus a resolution. And I really feel comfortable moving this to another Finance meeting.
Anyone else like to weigh in? Or someone makes a motion?
No, I will make a motion. Referring to Finance, I agree. That's the best way to handle it, and there are some very significant projects in this list. And I'd like to hear about them at a separate meeting.
Right, I'll second that move.
Okay.
All right. I think Councilor Elkins got that second. So motion made to refer items A through, sorry, 8A through I on the agenda to the Finance Committee. Motion made by Councilor Moulton and seconded by Councilor Elkins. Is there any discussion on this referral? Okay, seeing none, I, all in favor of referring to Finance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous, and will be referred to Finance.
I'll be reaching, yeah.
Between June 11 and 17.
Yes, I'll be reaching out to the committee members. Thank you. Well, I'll send an email around to see what would work for everybody and ask whether you want to be virtual or hybrid.
Okay. So that brings us to the budget orders. And I have a conflict of interest as a member of the Pedal People Cooperative, which has a pre-existing contract from before I was elected, with the Central Services Parking Maintenance. Council Vice President Mayori will now preside and has agreed to accommodate this conflict by dividing the motion. I'll return at that point to participate in a discussion about everything else in the general fund. And I also have a financial interest that's greater than the average resident in the decisions that are made regarding the Locust Street Transfer Center, which is part of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. So I'll be recusing myself for that item as well. So over to you, Vice President Mayori.
Okay. See you later. Okay, so I would be looking for a motion to put the FY26 general fund budget on the floor for discussion. This is not a motion to approve the order, just to put the budget on the floor.
I'm making a motion to put the budget on the floor.
Motion made by Councilor Clemmer, seconded by Councilor LaBarge. So then I would be looking for a motion to divide the question to separately consider the entirety of the Central Services parking and parking maintenance budget for the Pedal People Contract.
So moved. Second.
Great. Councilor Elkins, Councilor Clemmer, second. Okay. So now we are going to discuss the general fund minus the Central Services Parking Maintenance and Pedal People Contract. Yes, we have to, yeah, I'm sorry. We're gonna vote on it, and then we're gonna we're gonna discuss it minus the Central Services. Yes, so I guess we're all here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we can discuss. Now Alex can come back. But how will he know?
Oh.
I said a carrier pigeon. Okay. So now, yeah, so now we're discussing.
Okay, thank you so much for accommodating my conflict of interest. We're now discussing 25.253 in order to approve the FY26 general fund budget minus the Central Services Parking Maintenance budget. And Councilor Mayori and I suggest that we use this time to ask questions that we'd like answered during the budget hearing process. So Mayor Chara and her staff will be collecting these questions and will refer them to department heads. If appropriate, make sure they are addressed in the hearings or by email before June 5. So, councilors.
Okay.
Councilor Elkins.
So we're just posing questions to be answered later?
That is our suggestion. We think that's an efficient way for both correct the information to be that's necessary for us to get, that we'll get that during the budget hearings.
Then I have a question.
Great.
I will be interested to understand more about what the planning for the Department of Community Care will be if the EEPs grant does not come through and whether or not, so I understand, whether or not the pause on planned expansion will be it, or if that will also mean cuts in what we have existed.
Questions?
If anyone's using Zoom, to raise their hand. Councilor LaBarge.
Yeah, so we're supposed to do this now? Or can we do it at home and send it to you or whoever?
Either way, yeah, certainly you can send questions that you have at any time. But if they're sent before the budget hearings, then the mayor and staff will endeavor to make sure that they get answered during the budget hearings.
Okay, because she, one of them was community caring. I thank her for bringing that up.
Yeah.
It's the mayor.
Yeah, I'm gonna want some clarification about the student-teacher ratio. I'm confused by that whole paragraph. Because there's, as you say, there's a different definition by DESI. But DESI is the one who defines teachers, what constitutes a teacher. And so if we have, so if we're, and if we're talking about paras or other staff, those don't necessarily impact class size. So I'm also gonna wanna know what's the average class size. And I would, yeah, I think I would appreciate in the future, you know, using DESI's definition, because I find this, let's see, I find this confusing because, you know, you use the term educator, teacher. There's different terms in there, so I'm not getting a clear picture of the ratio. So that's something we could bring up during the budget hearings, the school budget hearings.
Can I give you a quick answer, if that helps? Is that all right?
I mean, that's okay with me.
So this, so in the, towards the back of your budget book, you have the MPS section.
Yeah.
So when you look at, there's a chart that has staffing. And it breaks it down by different categories, whether it's like administrators. That, so the teacher line is what we're talking about. And then the teacher plus para line is what we're talking about. So it's how we define it in North Hampton.
Right.
I can tell you the page number if that's.
Yeah, no, that's okay, but paras work with, you know, there's like almost 70 special education teachers. So they wouldn't work, that's not going to impact class size necessarily. I don't find, I find the way that we are defining it not clear in terms of the impact it has on our children's education.
Okay.
And I would like to look at class size.
Yeah, that would be a question for the superintendent.
Okay.
But it's page 123 shows the staff amounts from 2019 to 2025. And then there's a page with projected for '26 as well, I think.
Let's make sure, Councilor Mayori.
Yeah, so just the class size one, and I can ask the superintendent as well.
Did you have other questions?
I just wanted to follow up on that.
No, no, not this time.
Okay, it's up to Councilor Mayori if she's done. Okay, Councilor Rotham.
Yes, so just to clarify and reiterate, I think it sounds like we both would like to see special education broken out from the teachers count and the class size count, because those classes look very different in size than the general education classes. Thank you.
Is there anyone who hasn't gone yet? Yeah, Councilor Moul.
Yes, I am interested in the the plan to hire eight new firefighters. And I am happy to see that there is money budgeted for that in case the FEMA grant is not awarded. And I guess the FEMA grant could be. And I guess the FEMA grant could be awarded for any number, between one and eight of those positions. So there's a lot of uncertainty there.
Yes.
So I'm interested in a couple of things. One is, your message said that the, we budgeted for the positions starting in October of 2025. So that says to me that they would be working by October 2025. Or does that mean the hiring process would start in October 2025?
I believe, and this would be a question for the chief, but I believe the chief would start, try to start hiring before October for a start time of October.
That's a question to clarify. And then what, what would, what would happen to the roughly 335,000 if the FEMA grant is awarded for all eight positions?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that now, which is, it would, for that year, it would roll into free cash.
Okay, thanks.
Would anyone else like to ask a question who hasn't spoken yet? Okay, we'll go back to people. Go ahead, Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you. A question, Mayor. I know about the fire department. I know that in the budget, it is stating about the firefighters. I have a question when I had heard the captain, I mean, our chief of police telling me that they only have four officers on each shift. That's very unusual. So what are we going to do about that?
That would be a question for the chief. I wouldn't say that it's unusual. I believe that's been our staffing for quite a while.
Not quite a while.
Okay, we can get that number.
So what's your answer? I didn't hear that.
There is not an increase built into the budget.
So there's not?
There's not an increased staff, staffing increase.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Because I heard him say that, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, that isn't accurate. That's how many votes we have out.
Okay.
And I can find out for how long that's been. I don't know if that's since the cuts in 2020 or from before. I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Elkins.
Just to follow up about that question about the schools, the student-teacher ratios. I'd be, as we get that information, explaining that, if we get more information, I'd be curious to know if that's a, a school committee policy that was adopted by the superintendent or, and sort of where that derived. If we're using different numbers than DESI. If that is longstanding Northampton practice or ways of referencing? And if so, where, like I said, where it derives?
I have a question. I'm curious what the impacts would be on the other departments, the non-school departments, if we took, if we reduce those departments by both, like say, the amount that would be required to move school funding up to the level services budget and up to the strong budget. So I would appreciate if department heads could just speak to what kind of impacts we would see with those, that level of reduction. Counselor Rothenberg?
I'm just wondering how department heads would know that because you're not specifying how we would fund that.
I was going to ask a similar question. It would, it would depend on how those reductions were spread across the rest of the departments. So we could tell you, like, if they were spread equally across, you know, by percent?
Let's go with that.
Okay.
Counselor Elkins?
It's kind of a follow-up to your question. I think that a thing that might be helpful in that is, if you just go with a percentage across the board, it would be helpful to know what that percentage would look like across the board, across the other departments, but also taking into account the departments that are grant-funded. So they wouldn't be subject to cuts, you know what I mean? So if we're, if we're spreading out 5 million more to get to schools and we're in theory taking it from the other departments, it won't be spread equally across, I mean, you could theoretically say equally across, but, but some are not, some are grant-funded. So that, and that money couldn't be sent to, you know, to another department. Does that follow?
Right, it would have to be the general fund impact.
Right, so like the Department of Community Care is grant-funded.
Partly.
Partly, but into a larger percentage, so, so I think you understand what I mean. If you're not, I can follow up.
I can also follow up, discuss. Counselor Moulton?
So in addition to the questions that were asked about Division of Community Care, I'd also be interested in having Commissioner O'Leary address the potential loss of the other two grants that are mentioned, the Infectious Disease Grant and the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. I understand that will affect things like disease prevention, emergency preparedness and community-based care. But if she could put a human face on that, how that's going to be affecting real people?
Sure.
Thanks.
Counselor Dubs?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to sort of express my concern about the staff shortages in the DPW. And I'd like to hear more, maybe hear more about the impact that the four positions that are being, that will not be funded, or the impact that that will have. And also, I'd like to, I guess I'd just like to know anything that we can do throughout the next year to help with staffing at DPW. I just think it's extremely important and there's so many increasing demands for our sidewalks and roads that are in disrepair. And personally, I would like to see an expansion of the DPW over time. And I would just love to see how we can, how we can work on that.
Great, any other questions about the general fund minus Central Services? Yeah. Counselor LaBarge, yeah, turn your microphone.
Mayor, thank you. Question, Counselor Moulton mentioned something that I feel very serious about also. Is, I know talking with Meredith in regards of the federal government of her funding, that one program which she wanted to extend, which is the third one, which was the important one, that her and I had talked about, which with the schools, they'd be able to use some of that staff from community care. And at this point, we cannot, because she's still, I think, it's going to happen where she's going to lose that funding for, to adding on that new third tier on that. So that's critical for me.
I mean, so we're, we're pulling for EEPs and are hopeful that we will have that funding, but it is in jeopardy. So that is why we have not funded it in the budget for now.
That's why I'm asking, because I'm hoping that somehow she's going to get some form of funding for community care on that. Especially with the schools, which I brought up before, was using some of her staff out of the 15 employees.
Yeah, we will ask her to clarify that.
No, that's why she's saying with this, she could help out with that third tier.
I'm not, we can, I can talk to you about it. I'm not sure that there would be additional staff in the schools. I think there are some ways that DCC could help in the schools, but.
That's what I just meant.
Okey-dokey.
And I mentioned that before.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we can ask her about.
Talked about it and we, I talked with you about that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Rothenberg? Yeah?
Should I just start? So I'd like to know how many DPW vacancies are being carried over from last year? And if there's been any movement on their wages, if the contract negotiations are over? I'm also wondering about the $900,000 personnel reserve and why that number was set where it was. But also why it stays where it is in the look-ahead years? Because in prior years, that number was lower and then dropped. So I'm wondering if you've changed how you're using your tool? Whether you're not reflecting, you know, increases in departments and maybe you used to, something like that. I'm also curious from the Kappa Director about the $650,000. I'm wondering if that's for climate projects? And if they're being paid with cash upfront, how long until we see a break even on those? Should I keep going?
It sounds like there was maybe a clarification about your question.
Yeah.
The vacancies from the DPW are carried over from last year.
About the DPW was where we are with wages, if there's been any movement there. Yeah. I'm also wondering if federal funds are drying up? If we're considering reprogramming funds from any capital projects that are lower priority? Including projects in the backlog that are lower priority and projects that we recently funded? I'm wondering if we're expecting any increased revenue from increased fire and safety provisions that might impact ambulance revenue? And I guess what I'm really wondering most of all is if Director Nardi, you might have time to prepare what it would look like if we estimated local receipts at 90% of the prior year? Because I understand that you are being less conservative this year. But I think we are still below the DLS recommendations.
Is that 90% of just, just one prior year or the average of prior years?
Just the prior year.
Just one, this, this year and since?
No, it'd have to be 24.
Right, because we don't have all of this year yet. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and one last question. I would like to know if you're expecting 2.7 to 2.8 million dollar surplus in just the revenues that are underestimated? And if you're estimating about 4.5 million if we add in expenditures that are overestimated? And if you're expecting about 6 million dollars if we add in the interest? But I also want to note that I appreciate that you're adding the interest in next year's budget, since we didn't for the past three years.
And just to, oh, just to clarify, you're talking about fiscal year 26's estimations and expectations?
No, I'm talking about the surplus that we'll have at the end of this year.
So fiscal year 25?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you're asking for me to project what the revenue from, or what free cash will be?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, broken down by those three categories, the interest, the expenditures, the revenue.
Which DLS recommendations are you referring to?
I'll send you the citation.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Clemmer?
Yeah, just any information you have or plans? If the federal government does take, does not give us some of the funding that we usually get for the schools and education departments? If there's, where the money will come from or what will happen? Thanks.
Counselor Elkins?
I am very anxious to understand how, if it can be known, how federal policies would affect some of the advocacy that's been done around flood control system, the big project up and down the Connecticut River. And I would appreciate Director Liscalia's thoughts on that.
Okay, go ahead.
One question is just for the mayor to confirm that we are 2.7 million dollars short on the strong budget that the school committee requested. And then I have four questions for every department head. Do you ever have to bring your own supplies to work? Do you ever have to work unpaid? Do you ever have staff cuts? Do you have attrition due to retirement? Do you lose positions? And I guess there was a fifth question as well, just what did you ask for that you didn't get?
Thanks, everyone, for all your questions. Of course, if you have more, please send them in. And the mayor and her staff will attempt to get those to the department heads and answer either during the budget hearings or prior to our June 5 meeting.
I just had a question for Director Nardi about the final, the fourth quarter. Remind me when those come up?
Those won't come out until August.
August, okay, thank you.
So I just want to say that I've been meeting with residents from around the city to look at the budget and, and at the fiscal stability plan. And I invite any, any, any of you, even if you're Ward 5 or not, to reach out if you'd like to meet with me. I also want to say I appreciate the work the mayor and the city staff have done to develop the budget and say that we will only have a better understanding of it through questioning assumptions and getting all the information that we feel we need to make an informed decision. And for members of the public, I encourage you to attend the budget hearings. These are the official times for you to be heard on the proposed budget and to weigh in and ask your questions.
Did we actually announce them? I should have announced them in announcement.
We announced it at the beginning.
Okay, at the beginning. I thought we did.
Formal.
But I actually meant to do it during announcements.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes, May 27, the next one.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I'm going to step away and Counselor Mayori will take over and you can discuss the part of the budget that you haven't been talking about and the solid waste budget as well.
I just have a question, you know, the, the cost of trash and compost disposal have risen. I'm just wondering, like, is it peaking? Is it leveling out? Whatever. But I'm just really interested in seeing, you know, what our deficit is and how we're going to deal with that in the future.
I'm so sorry. There is one more question about that personnel reserve, the 900,000. Will, will we be getting any updates on that figure? Like, will we have more information now that some contracts are being negotiated before we, let's say, before June 30? And will we be updating that in our forecasting? Thanks.
I understand your question. Are you asking if the number will change? If the number will change in the budget?
Yes, and even if you don't change it in the budget, I'd like to know the latest information that we have on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this would fall in that category. For Director Liscalia, last year we spoke about reducing the hours at the transfer station. Is that still on the table? Is it still being thought about?
So that's, there's been a reduction of hours in this budget?
Thanks.
So now we need a motion to refer.
I would move to refer the bifurcated items departments that we just spoke of.
that we just spoke of. To finance specifically.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The order for the general fund budget and the order for the solid waste.
Well, bifurcated.
Orders that we're referring.
Right, I mean technically he could vote on the.
But so orders themselves, so that need to be referred. I mean, we had the conceptual.
Right.
Order itself.
You're talking about general fund and the.
The, yeah, the 25, 25, 3, definitely 25, 25, 6.
Right.
So my understanding is that.
So we should have felt it differently? I mean.
No, I just, I think the way she said it, I didn't quite understand it as what I thought needed to happen, which is to refer those two financial orders to finance. Maybe that is what you meant.
It is, it's those two financial orders that, that he had to recuse himself. So, no, that's okay. I didn't use all the words, but he used a cool word, so.
Yes.
So, yes, a motion made by Counselor Elkins, seconded by Counselor Moulton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so that's referred to finance. Anything else I forgot to do? You'd think after how many years I would be smoother.
Thank you all again for the accommodation. So I propose that we have, let's see, we have five more financial orders related to the budget. They are 25.254, which is the sewer enterprise fund, 25.255, the water enterprise fund, 25.257, the stormwater and flood control enterprise fund, and, or at 25.258, in order to approve the revolving funds, and 25.259, in order to appropriate $294,508 from free cash to the North Hampton Public Schools Special Education Stabilization Fund. So propose we discuss all of those and, and again, take questions. I'd say the, the, the last one is a little bit different in that it is, will it be referred to finance?
With the.
Yes, I guess that as well. The Special Education Stabilization Fund. I guess we have, we have an option on, on that. It's not quite the same as the rest of the, the budget. So, but that we discuss, discuss those and then, and take questions about all of them. And then we'll do a referral to finance. So any questions for the mayor and department heads about sewer, water, stormwater, the revolving funds, or the free cash to the Special Education Stabilization Fund? I would have a question about the stormwater and flood control. When we took a DPW tour last year and it's, it's clear the fragility of our stormwater and flood control systems. And certainly we've, you know, gotten many, we've gotten grants to, to help with that. But the, this budget has been flat for many years. And is there a long-term plan to address the fund, the proper funding of the stormwater and flood control? Okay.
President Jarrett, could we just send our regards to Paco? We're losing the Forbes library.
Yes, thank you, Forbes library.
Good night, Forbes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to refer the sewer enterprise, water enterprise, stormwater and flood control and the revolving funds to finance.
Move to refer those four to finance.
Second, okay, motion made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by Counselor Labarche. Any discussion on referral? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that just leaves us with 25.259, in order to appropriate $294,508 from free cash to NCS Special Education Stabilization Fund. Mayor Shar, would you like to speak to this item?
Um, I mean, I, like, I covered it in the, in the method. But, you know, as I said.
Sorry, this wasn't on. With Medicaid funding sort of unclear and hanging in the balance, we want to take this opportunity to make this fund as full as legally possible to, you know, to protect against whether, if Medicaid's lost, that we have some funding in it for a few years as we go forward. And hopefully, there would be a change and Medicaid would, again, start flowing.
And what is the balance of our undesignated fund right now? How much of this is taken? Because those funds are frozen on June 30th, right?
Right.
Yes.
I don't think it's that good, I'll pull that out.
Sure. Are there other questions? Counselor Moulton?
Yes, I think this makes very good sense to anticipate a potential cut or elimination of Medicaid reimbursements. The, the money would, would, there's a ceiling though. Isn't there a ceiling on how much the school committee could spend from this fund? And, and if that, if that, the answer is yes, then that, the remaining money would, would carry over to the, to the next fiscal year. Is it?
Right, so.
Is that correctly?
The amount that we're asking for would keep us under the, or keep us up to the cap of what's allowed in the fund and, and would, factors in what we assume will be used this year.
And then therefore, if the Medicaid funds are reimbursed, that, that additional money over that cap would be carried over?
Yes. That's right, right? Hmm? So I'm not sure I understand. So we're going to increase the amount that we can hold in that account? And then the, the school and the council has the right to vote another 140, it's just under 141,000, I think, to make it 350,000 for the year. They could take that out. I think the question is if, if Medicaid does come through. Yep. If Medicaid. Then be too much in the account. Oh, no, no, because we're going to be pulling out money. So we're not going to get 350,000 back. So it'll be fine. And actually, it'll be a different year. When we enter FY 2026, it'll be based on the estimated net school spending for FY 26. The cap that we've done is for the estimated net school spending for FY 2025. So do you see when we increase the amount for our net school spending, we can increase the cap? So we'll be under that.
Okay, so just to be clear then, this is guaranteed money for the stabilization fund. It is not going to be affected by any Medicaid reimbursements that come through it 100%.
Correct.
Okay.
It's additional money, yep. And then to answer your question, Council President, there is $781,094 in free cash.
Thank you. We have Counselor Rothenberg?
Just before we vote on this, I'd like a very brief recess, but I can wait until you're done discussing it.
Sure, I was just going to give layout of our options.
Are you going to do it on second, you're not going to vote on that part tonight, are you?
No, no, I don't think there's any proposal.
Okay, great, well, then I'll have a two-week recess, or, that's fine. Disregard.
The options are refer to finance and take up when we, you know, during the budget hearings? Or to refer to the consent agenda of our next meeting? Counselor Elkins?
Move to refer to the consent agenda? Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Elkins, seconded by Counselor Maori. Is there any further discussion on referring to the consent agenda of our next meeting?
Yes, I will vote no, because I still think this is a very strange fund. I think it would benefit from being revisited, but I'll refer back to all of my prior comments about this on the record. And that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, so but your, your no vote is, is about referral, not on the actual.
Not, right, I don't think it should go to consent. I think it should go to finance and, and be explored more. It's a very strange fund to me.
Understood. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of referral to the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions?
No.
Okay. Noted, that passes eight to one. Okay, that's all of the budget-related financial orders. Looking forward to the hearing next week. And so that brings us to zoning ordinances not yet referred. And so the city council shall submit proposed zoning ordinances to the planning board for review within 14 days of receipt. And no zoning ordinance shall be adopted until after the planning board in a city or town and the city council or a committee designated or appointed for the purpose of said council has each held a public hearing thereon together or separately. So our rules require that this should go to the Committee on Legislative Matters. And because this is a citizen petition, unlike the option that we had in April, we are required by mass general law to refer this to the planning board and to, and then by our rules to legislative matters. So I would entertain a motion to refer this to the planning board and legislative matters.
Move to refer. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Elkins and seconded by Counselor Clemmer to refer to the planning board and legislative matters. Discussion?
And, are you picturing a joint meeting? Yeah, I'm sure I'm.
That'd be nice.
I can validate that. They, they have a meeting tomorrow night. And we couldn't post anything that fast anyway. So I'll be in touch with a very competent and ethical, outstanding planning director, Carolyn Mish, about scheduling that.
Yeah, whatever you think is best, I was just curious.
Yep, it must be advertised at least 14 days in advance. So we have that timeline to work with. And it has to happen within 65 days.
That's what I was wanting, 65. I will get, get back to those items, that's about scheduling.
Thank you. Counselor Maori?
Yeah, and but, and as, and if the vote tomorrow in planning board, will that impact this?
Yeah, if a special permit is approved prior to the advertised date of, of the hearing, then the special permit is, is allowed to proceed. It's.
Oh.
And whatever we wouldn't, wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to. However, if the special permit is not approved by the time the zoning ordinance is advertised, then it would be retroactive to that date that it was advertised. Counselor Rothenberg and then Counselor Elkins?
Yeah, I just want to note an objection for Ward 3 and particularly the neighborhood at Phillips Place and Butler. I don't think that we moved quickly enough on this. I don't think we did a very good service to them. I don't think they're very happy with us. So I just wanted to note that on the record. But I'm sure they will pursue that in another venue and I don't need to say more about it here.
Counselor Elkins?
I was just going to note, it's my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, that advertising doesn't mean posting a meeting. It means it has to be advertised in.
Yes.
In, in the paper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a referral on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of referral? Okay.
Aye.
All in favor of referral to legislative matters in the planning board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that, I will look forward to that public hearing. So that brings us now to the last thing on our agenda. 25.252, a resolution in support of an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts. And would the sponsors like to read the resolution? And should we, or you'd be able to bring this up on the screen? Thank you.
Are you cold? Sorry. Sorry, I'm trying to find my, okay.
Let's start.
I don't know.
Go ahead.
Okay, sure. So yeah, thank you. This is 25.252, a resolution in support of an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts upon the recommendation of Councillors Jeremy Dubs, Rachel Maori, Stanley W. Moulton III, and Clayverly H. Rothenberg. Be resolved by the city council of the city of North Hampton and city council assembled as follows. Whereas access to affordable, quality healthcare is a human right and fundamental, a fundamental component of a decent and just society. And whereas the United States remains one of the few countries in the world that does not fully support that right by offering universal publicly funded healthcare to its residents and? Someone else?
So Rothenberg?
Sure.
Thank you.
Whereas the rapidly rising cost of health insurance coverage and the shifting of healthcare costs to the insured in the form of co-pays, deductibles and coinsurance force many Massachusetts residents to defer care for conditions that benefit from early diagnosis and treatment.
Whereas vulnerable communities are disproportionately impacted by hospital medical debt, with female, black and lower income patients having a higher likelihood of incurring such debt and.
Whereas there is a shortage of primary medical care for business in Western Massachusetts requiring to the owner's time burdening processes that would stay higher organizations that have, well, the doctrine was completely mandated by private health defense companies that are more concerned.
Sorry. That are more concerned with increasing their profits than providing necessary medical.
Whereas the bankruptcy of the Stewart Healthcare Hospitals in Massachusetts and unfair profit-driven practices of insurance corporations have increased awareness and mobilized Massachusetts residents against our for-profit healthcare system and?
Whereas November 2024, a non-binding ballot initiative, question six, regarding Medicare for All passed in favor of adopting a single payer healthcare system in all 11 legislative districts where it was on the ballot and?
Whereas the continued cost of employed paid health insurance negatively affects our local economy, forcing businesses and municipalities to reduce staffing, defer raises and hire part-time workers and?
Whereas the current healthcare system results in 31% of every healthcare dollar going to paperwork, CEO salaries and profit, while Medicare covers 60 million residents and operates with just 3% overhead and?
Whereas the city of North Hampton will spend nearly $14 million on employee retiree health insurance during fiscal year 2025, 11.32% of its total general budget and?
Whereas the city of North Hampton projects a cost of at least $15,421,542 for employee retiree health insurance for fiscal year 2026, a 10.6% estimated increase from fiscal year 2025, compared to prior 3% to 4% annual increases and?
Whereas the city of North Hampton would save approximately $6.6 million annually on employee retiree health insurance, single payer healthcare and?
Whereas an alternative system that provides quality, affordable healthcare for all would remedy the unfairness, unevenness and disparity of the current healthcare system and advance the goals of increasing access, improving quality and containing costs and?
Whereas Medicare for All or single payer healthcare is a system that would guarantee inpatient and outpatient medical, dental, vision and nursing home care for all Massachusetts residents regardless of income, employment status or pre-existing conditions and without copayments, deductibles or cost sharing by establishing the Massachusetts Healthcare Trust Fund that centralizes healthcare financing and cost control while maintaining. Fund that centralizes healthcare financing and cost control while maintaining the private delivery of healthcare and?
Whereas an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts is a bill in the state legislature, H. 1405 S. 860, with 73 cosponsors during the last session of the Massachusetts House and Senate, including Northampton Representative Lindsey Sabodosa, who is the lead sponsor, and Northampton State Senator Joe Commerford and?
Whereas Massachusetts consistently has been a leader and innovator in providing quality health coverage for its residents and the Northampton City Council has supported these initiatives by, for example, unanimously approving on August 17th, 2017, a prior resolution supporting an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Northampton City Council remains committed to providing high-quality healthcare to city employees and retirees and to making such healthcare available to all residents of Massachusetts and?
Be it further resolved that the city council supports the passage of an act establishing Medicare for All in Massachusetts and?
Be it further resolved that the city council commends and supports State Representative Lindsey Sabodosa for being the lead House cosponsor of H. 1405 and State Senator Joe Commerford for being a cosponsor of S. 860.
Be it further resolved that the administrative assistant to the city council shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to Massachusetts Governor Maury Healy, Treasurer Deborah B. Goldberg, the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Healthcare Financing, Senate President Karen B. Spilka, Speaker of the House Ron Mariano, Senator James Eldridge, currently Senate sponsor Senator Joe Commerford, Representative Lindsey Sabodosa, currently co-led House sponsor, U.S. Representative Jim McGovern, U.S. Senators Elizabeth Warren and Ed Markey, and Northampton Mayor Gina Louis Shiarra.
Thank you. Thank you sponsors. Would you like to speak to the resolution? Councilor Dubs?
Sure, yes, I'm very excited and happy to be a part of this resolution. I want to thank my fellow counselors for being a part of it with me and also for Resident Shelley Berkowitz for, for introducing this resolution to us. I think it's amazing, I think that healthcare is a human right and right now healthcare is in danger by the federal government. As a, as a disabled person, I am a personal beneficiary of Medicare and I have been most of my adult life. It's, it's helped me to be, be able to be independent, to not have to worry, you know, when, when I need healthcare, that, that it's there for me. And I would like that to be, you know, I think that, that, that everybody should have that right to, to have healthcare, you know, provided for them without having to worry about it. And, and as some may know, in, in the news yesterday, it came out, the, there was a nonpartisan Congressional Budget Office gave a report that the current bill, that the, the big awful bill that they're trying to push right now in the federal government, that would lead to not only cuts in Medicaid, but to $500 billion cuts in Medicare, which is astounding and frightening. And so anything we can do on the state level to protect each other, protect ourselves, I think we gotta, we have to do, so I'm full support of this.
Yeah.
Councilor Mayory?
Yeah, so just to say, this makes good business sense. Current, this current system, 31% of every healthcare dollar goes to CEO salaries, corporate profits, lobbying and paperwork. With this system, Medicare covers 60 million with just 3% overhead. A study by, that referred to the economist and my former professor Gerald Friedman estimates, estimates that bill would lower healthcare spending in the state by almost 11% or about $48.4 billion even after accounting for the cost of expanding the coverage to everyone. Imagine, you know, the negotiating power of a single payer to lower prices for prescription drugs and medical devices. It also improves health, it brings healthcare dollars under public control. 41% of mass families struggle to pay for healthcare costs, 36% of our state budget goes to pay for healthcare and, you know, the criticism about rations, the US already rations care. Rationing in the US healthcare is based on income and if you can't afford it, you don't get it and, you know, you may die. So this is really, it's, it's, it's sound and, and Northampton, with a 10.6% increase estimate, that's over $15 million for, you know, for our city employees and retirees, we would save about $6.6 million. Imagine what we could do with that, you know, what, what our budget conversation would look like. So, and I just wanted to say, just clarifies, you know, a common misconception, although it's, it puts the healthcare dollars in public control, it's not socialized medicine. It's, the delivery of care remains private and patients would have a free choice of doctors and hospitals and doctors would regain autonomy over patient care. So it's win-win that way.
Absolutely. Mathenberg?
Thanks. I just wanted to use my time mostly to thank some of the people who contributed to this. I don't have a complete list and I can't even remember everybody's name that I do know about and can remember. For example, I think there's a fellow who used to be the president of the US Postal Carriers and I think he's now doing a lot of work kind of spearheading this. So thank you to him. Thank you to select board member from Leverett, Jed Prujansky, who so kindly reached out to us to tell us he was excited that we were doing this, that Leverett had just unanimously passed this and the hope is really that all 351 municipalities pass this, so we're going to be part of a wave. And I also really wanted to thank local tree star Kent Johnson, who did a lot of work. We just put him on the Urban Forestry Commission. He's wonderful, he's a data analyst and he, he helped Shelley a lot with doing some of these initial estimations using masscare.org and their calculator and he was really like a detective kind of with all the pieces he could find and all of our public financial information. And he came out really close to the figure that I understand Councilor Moulton landed on, which is maybe around $6.5 million worth of savings for the city if this were to go through. Our figure, what Kent's figure was more around $7.5 million and he thought that was even conservative. And that of course doesn't touch the savings for the individuals and their contributions. So I think it's a no-brainer for the reasons that you've said. I join you in your reasons as well, but it makes good financial sense for us.
Councilor Moulton?
Yes, thank you. Thanks to the cosponsors and a particular thanks to Shelley Berkowitz, who is a constituent of mine, who was the, kind of the driving force behind keeping us on track and getting this before the council. So it can, so we can weigh in. This is a national issue, of course, and Medicare was created in, in 1965 and soon after that, talk began in, in Congress about expanding Medicare as a, a single payer health plan for all citizens. Nothing's happened in, in the last 50 years on that front and Medicare for All bill keeps getting reintroduced in Congress every, every legislative session, at least in this century. So we have to turn to the state and we have, fortunately, both Senator Commerford and Representative Sabodosa are strong supporters of this. And I think that while the, the Northampton City Council eight years ago unanimously approved a, a similar resolution, it is good for us to keep the momentum going, as, as was mentioned during public comment, and to really demonstrate, as we hope other communities do, that there is a good reason for adopting this at the state level. So I would appreciate support for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors on the way in?
Yeah, I just want to thank all the sponsors for this and Shelley Berkowitz for bringing it to you guys. And I've just been a big supporter of this for many, many years and I'm really excited to have it being spoken about again and, I mean, hopefully it'll pass. We really need it here. The money we spend on healthcare and, like someone said, it's, if you don't have money or you don't have a job and, and you have to pay for yourself, you get really, really expensive care that you can't use because the deductibles are so high. So things really need to change here and, and also the referrals, the, I forget what it's called, just waiting for an appointment to go to a specialist to, is, you know, people could have a worse, much worse outcome because they had to wait so long to get these referrals and to see their primary, to go to a specialist. So thank you all for, for doing this today.
Councilor LaBarge?
I have to say, I heard Counselor Moulton speaking about many years ago, Fred Robinson, Turkey Hill Road, a whole bunch of those, way back, Medicare for All, Medicare for All. So it's just not now, it's been there and it's been many, many years and so many people, so many people wanted that badly and they fought and fought and fought and I was there with them. And I have to say that, I have talked in with State Rep. Lindsey Sabodosa, I also called private insurance companies on this also, and I told Stan about it too. And they are saying it does not affect private insurance companies. If you have them, you can keep them. So. Thought I'd let you know that.
Yeah, Councilor Perry?
I just want to thank everybody for working on this. Thank you, Shelley. You know, I spent a lot of my life without health insurance. Musicians don't get that luxury often and I think as Counselor Dubb said, it is, it's a right that everyone should have, so I am gung-ho for it. So, thank you.
I'll weigh in, I'm absolutely in favor. I really appreciate all the work of, I actually was doing a Pedal People route and ran into Shelley Berkowitz and we started talking all about this. And so I, I was excited to see it get, get submitted. And I love also the grassroots approach to get state to pay attention, that each of us as a community, passing these resolutions makes a difference. Okay, so no action is needed. This will appear on our June 5th agenda and that's when we would approve it.
There was a second reading.
Move to adjourn?
Wave, wave second reading?
Well, I think we might want to wait for Dr. Berkowitz.
Are we having a party?
Yeah. There might be people who wanted to comment, who didn't get to tonight, but that, that is a good dot, but I think I, when I, I asked her once and I believe that they were people who wanted to weigh in.
Cool.
Okay, we'll take it up then. Thanks, thanks again. Is there any new business? Okay, I'd entertain a.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Perry and seconded by Councilor Clemmer. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We are adjourned, see you on Tuesday.
We're out of here.
We're good.